I know who's coming in kindergarten and what the needs may or may not be. So once again, so now as a school district, we're not simply in the dark as students come to kindergarten and have set the cutoff guard.
And who pays for those services?
The county.
And that's just like historically, there've been times when there's been legislation on the table that would actually have the school districts pay for these services. But it's never gone anywhere.
Yes, so right now, so pretty much that's, you know, the whole background to CPS. Okay, that was the presentation. And once again, if you look at the next page as far as students aging in, you can see the historical trend. Next year, we're going to have 12 students coming in. I've already done some observations. 10 of them will be coming at the chancellor. Two of them simply aren't quite ready yet, so once again, they're going to be added on to the private day placements this time next year when we have the report. One of the things I've talked to everybody about two in years past is that as students transition to preschool, we have the meetings. If cognitive skills are fairly typical, if academic readiness skills are fairly typical, but they just need speech, we'll just say they need an IP team typically declassify them, given that they're listed services as a general ed service and just had to come into kindergarten. And that's been a traditional practice over the years. What I've done with those numbers as far as the top listed numbers in the bottom table, I kind of ran them forward so you guys can get a sense. And if you take a look at who's come in and then who is, you know, a preschool student coming into kindergarten, obviously, many of them would declassify. And then as they've rolled through the grades up to this point, there've been 17 students who simply through either through the preschool program and our ability to give services vis a vis through the general ed program who didn't even declassify four or five years later. And I think that the strength that the school has in order to identify students, give them the service minus the classification, and obviously, things work out pretty well. So once again, that's all I've always thought that's been a strength of our school to kind of unbundle some of the services right there. Okay. Next page, once again, as far as parent in place students. Not much has changed there. Pretty much, our numbers are fairly consistent from year to year. Homeschool, we have one student. We don't have anybody right now in home band instruction, although I do have a student who's kind of a tweener depending on home band and if he can make it to class. I didn't put him on that right there. We look at the bottom as far as the school population. Everybody in our school registries, we have 1,118 students. 108 represents all CSE students K to 12 minus CPSA. And that includes all students in our school three buildings and also placed outside. So that's all students classified through the district. The next one I want to talk about a little bit because it goes into some of my talking points. You take a look at trends over the last several years as far as students who are classified who dropped out, GED. The IP diploma just now has been phased out. So definitely, there are two, just so we could all get a sense of what it was replaced with. It's now replaced with the CDOSS. That's a career, you know, career college and economy certificate. It's a career certification that's going to allow us to add more transition and work study programs for students who simply don't have the ability to simply meet regions in the local high school reacquaintance. And so, once again, it kept out the same regions and local. If you take a look at that, this goes back in 2003, 2010. Turn the page, we have the last three years. You'll notice that as far as last year, we were mixed with disabilities who got a region diploma. One of the main reasons for that is that, as I mentioned before, last year is that students who come to the high school who are really doing quite well and don't need this level of service, what we've done as they moved on to junior senior years, declassified them from CSE, divide them, test accommodations that they need, and/or a period every day of resource room vis a vis a section 504 plan. Once again, it's kind of taking away the scaffolding as they prepare to leave high school and go up to college. So once again, so that zero doesn't represent CSE students who aren't making standard anymore. Realize those students who would have maybe stay classified four, five, six years ago recently were being promoted to 504 plans, and that's why right now that there's a zero right there. And I mention it because if you look at the new Common Core, some of the guidance documents, one of the things is clear that after 20 years of special ed through the country is that we're sending kids to college with simply too many supports in place in high school. And when they're going to college, they're struggling. And part of, if you go through the Engage New York website, they're actually mentioning the process of de-scaffolding students so when they go to college, they can actually be prepared for the kind of fluency and rigor that they're going to experience in college. So I know one of the things that I've been a goal of mine here over the years is obviously, middle school's tough, so you kind of keep things in place in middle school. But as students mature and actually grow into themselves, as they come through high school, we can begin to kind of take apart the scaffolds. This is a great place, you know, a great safe place to do that, to make sure they can kind of stand on their own. So when they get ready for the next step, they can be as successful as possible. So that's been kind of one of my goals, and that's why that zero's there. So just so you know, they're all here in Common Core, they just moved to a different committee.
Oh, go ahead, Laura.
All right, Richard, just back up with that other special ed enrollment. The moved in and moved out columns, are those because they've been declassified or more maybe they've left the district?
These people who moved in, the whole district. We have 11 students moved to different districts, yep. And then six moved in. And actually, the move to 504, we'll see towards the last place as far as classification rate, because that's gone down by reference to the fact that some students moved to section 504.
Richard, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So there's still an option even with the various reforms initiatives for a local diploma?
There is. And that's complicated. If you want, I can take the board through it. It's a little, it's okay.
So there's like the local, still the regions, and there's this CDOSS is for diplomas, and there's GED.
Well, the CDOSS isn't a diploma.
Okay, it's a certificate.
Certificate.
Right.
Because the IP had the word diploma in it, and it confused parents for 25 years. They thought they were getting a valid exit credential, and it does not count as a valid exit credential. You can't join the military with it, and you can't go to college with it. So what happens is that getting feedback from colleges, parents, and say, the Chamber of Commerce, the state realized they wanted to change that. Also realized the IP diploma, it was too wide a spectrum. So any encompassed students who are leaving here who may have, say, passed three regional exams or three RCTs but couldn't pass either two RCTs, also encompass the rest of the student at Anderson who is non-verbal, they both got the same diploma. So that didn't seem to be fair, because obviously, there are two qualitatively different people. So what they wanted to do is kind of divide those two populations out. So students who are with severe disabilities can get a skills achievement credential. And then students who have a higher level but may not be able to make simply the region safety net, we get the CDOSS. So as of right now, the RCTs are only grandfathered for current seniors. And after that, the state has instituted a new state in that, which is a 45 to 54 cash flow.
Right.
And everything but the NAMAs. So it still exists. They're still fairly, you know, still fairly accommodating, but it does, you know, definitely changes the whole landscape. So, do you want me to go into that more about that state in that options? You guys?
I don't care about that.
You okay? Okay. As far as the programs do, once again, things really haven't changed a whole lot. Like I said, one of the things I've appreciated in my years as a school psychologist is that we're a fairly inclusive, integrated place to be. So once again, we really kind of make the work inside the classroom. So pretty much, we have, you know, the programs haven't changed. We have the 112-1 integrated, it's over the chancellor. We have consultant teacher services. If there needs to be a special English map class for students who truly cannot connect with the material in any way, shape, or form, we can put one of those together for a handful of students. We still traditionally have the resource room at the high school. We have the learning center at the middle school. We have structured study halls for some students where we use teacher assistants. So some students may have a period of resource room daily and then a place of a kind of a study hall where they may need some more guidance. We may have a teaching assistant teacher structured study hall. So once again, as far as the programs through the three buildings, things have been fairly consistent. And actually, you know, the state wants us to move to high levels of integration. So really, that's the push. So, you know, that's something, once again, a strength from being here that's always kind of been our push ourselves. Once again, I mentioned it in my first floor presentation as far as, you know, special disorder students on the spectrum. We do have a reputation for working well and seeing successful students on the autism spectrum. And as you can see by our numbers, they've increased quite significantly over the years. They tend to be males, and they, not all of them, but some of them just tend to have a lot of very needy kind of individuals. They have executive functioning disorders, once again, attention, planning, kind of working with these teachers in the classroom can be difficult. So once again, those numbers have increased, and also, in some cases, they have high kind of management needs, certain costs of the debt. So once again, that's something a little stressing on the system, given the fact that overall classification rate has gone down. But with the increase of students on the spectrum, once again, the need as far as human resources is still quite high. And we have two students right now in the district, both classified autistic, who have 12 A's. So once again, that's a high level of staff support, you know, to make sure they're receiving free and appropriate public education. Yep. Once again, as far as placements, you can see, once again, the numbers as far as residential BOSIs, private day, things really haven't changed a whole lot over the last several years. Conferences and the trainings with the teachers is fairly consistent, although we have been able to get some people in here from some, from the Carbon Clinic, which is a nice piece of carbon from Columbia, has a clinic, I think, down in Rockland County. So we've had some of his consultants come up here, work with us with some of the students and families. That's been pretty, that's actually worked out pretty well. Kind of added that to the thing. And also, once again, knowing that we have students on the spectrum, we've been able to bring in some people to work on more behavioral principles, especially a chancellor there. They tend to be a little more, you know, a little bit more messy. And to stay off really counseling, although a great technique for students who are older, you know, when someone's on the spectrum, they're second grade, who wants to be counseled, something's got to make it. So the teachers need more behavioral kind of management skills as far as tougher reinforcement economies, to make sure they're reinforcing the right behaviors instead of not reinforcing the proper behaviors. So that's been an area where we've been giving people some training, but that's a skill. It's not something everybody has when they go to college. Once again, as far as the talking points, like I said, I think things, once again, take the same. And I just think that, you know, once again, my goal to make sure is that obviously, students receive a free and appropriate public education, which is the goal of the special ed in the least restrictive environment possible, excuse me. Part of that, obviously, let's say, in the mission before, is that going through high school is that we want to kind of de-scaffold and take away the scaffolds and supports. Do that here while they're in a safe school. They know everybody here at the small school. Shouldn't the need arise in acute fashion where they need to have an additional support? It's easy enough to kind of segue it back in. I'd rather do that now and kind of work out some of the bumps than simply send them off to college where, as we all know, research says, you know, the first year, I think, you know, 33% don't make it. I don't want that to be the first time to take off the training wheels, and then someone's got to figure it out on their own. So that's why, once again, that's been my big push in the last three years as students come through, is to kind of take this apart slowly and simply give me the ability to adapt here while it's still a safe place to make some mistakes. Once again, going back to the number of students, 12, 13, with the regions, let's kind of fold it into that right there. I think the other thing that I think I'm proud of is obviously a classification, you see the top of that on the last page, is 9.7%. The state average right now is 13%. I talked to peers across the county. You know, the KIPSY was as high as 19, medical was as high as 15. Will meet with someone for a school psychology physician several years ago, they mentioned West Paulings was as high as 24%. You know, people are disproportionately classifying students through the CSE process, and I think through good intentions, they think it's like I mentioned, those teachers and parents here. You know, this isn't the extra help committee. This is a committee where I'm deciding childhood disability. And I take that very seriously because that's a civil right that the student has. I want to make sure that who do make that decision, all the data points point in the same direction. So I am proud of the fact that we have a low classification rate, 9.7. I know the state likes to keep it about 11, 10, 11. That seems about average. And once again, and I know who's coming into kindergarten and what the needs may or may not be. So once again, so now as a school district, we're not simply in the dark as students come to kindergarten and have set the cutoff guard.
And who pays for those services?
The county.
And that's just like historically, there've been times when there's been legislation on the table that would actually have the school districts pay for these services. But it's never gone anywhere.
No. Yes, so right now, so pretty much that's, you know, the whole background to CPS. Okay, that was the presentation. And once again, if you look at the next page as far as students aging in, you can see the historical trend. Next year, we're going to have 12 students coming in. I've already done some observations. 10 of them will be coming at the chancellor. Two of them simply aren't quite ready yet, so once again, they're going to be added on to the private day placements this time next year when we have the report. And one of the things I've talked to everybody about two in years past is that as students transition to preschool, we have the meetings. If cognitive skills are fairly typical, if academic readiness skills are fairly typical, but they just need speech, we'll just say they need an IP team typically declassify them, given that they're listed services as a general ed service and just had to come into kindergarten. And that's been a traditional practice over the years. What I've done with those numbers as far as the top listed numbers in the bottom table, I kind of ran them forward so you guys can get a sense. And if you take a look at who's come in and then who is, you know, a preschool student coming into kindergarten, obviously, many of them would declassify. And then as they've rolled through the grades up to this point, there've been 17 students who simply through either through the preschool program and our ability to give services vis a vis through the general ed program who didn't even declassify four or five years later. And I think that the strength that the school has in order to identify students, give them the service minus the classification, and obviously, things work out pretty well. So once again, that's all I've always thought that's been a strength of our school to kind of unbundle some of the services right there. Next page, once again, as far as parent in place students. Not much has changed there. Pretty much, our numbers are fairly consistent from year to year. Homeschool, we have one student. We don't have anybody right now in home band instruction, although I do have a student who's kind of a tweener depending on home band and if he can make it to class. I didn't put him on that right there. We look at the bottom as far as the school population. Everybody in our school registries, we have 1,118 students. 108 represents all CSE students K to 12 minus CPSA. And that includes all students in our school three buildings and also placed outside. So that's all students classified through the district. The next one I want to talk about a little bit because it goes into some of my talking points. You take a look at trends over the last several years as far as students who are classified who dropped out, GED. The IP diploma just now has been phased out. So definitely, there are two, just so we could all get a sense of what it was replaced with. It's now replaced with the CDOSS. That's a career, you know, career college and economy certificate. It's a career certification that's going to allow us to add more transition and work study programs for students who simply don't have the ability to simply meet regions in the local high school reacquaintance. And so, once again, it kept out the same regions and local. If you take a look at that, this goes back in 2003, 2010. Turn the page, we have the last three years. You'll notice that as far as last year, we were mixed with disabilities who got a region diploma. One of the main reasons for that is that, as I mentioned before, last year is that students who come to the high school who are really doing quite well and don't need this level of service, what we've done as they moved on to junior senior years, declassified them from CSE, divide them, test accommodations that they need, and/or a period every day of resource room vis a vis a section 504 plan. Once again, it's kind of taking away the scaffolding as they prepare to leave high school and go up to college. So once again, so that zero doesn't represent CSE students who aren't making standard anymore. Realize those students who would have maybe stay classified four, five, six years ago recently were being promoted to 504 plans, and that's why right now that there's a zero right there. And I mention it because if you look at the new Common Core, some of the guidance documents, one of the things is clear that after 20 years of special ed through the country is that we're sending kids to college with simply too many supports in place in high school. And when they're going to college, they're struggling. And part of, if you go through the Engage New York website, they're actually mentioning the process of de-scaffolding students so when they go to college, they can actually be prepared for the kind of fluency and rigor that they're going to experience in college. So I know one of the things that I've been a goal of mine here over the years is obviously, middle school's tough, so you kind of keep things in place in middle school. But as students mature and actually grow into themselves, as they come through high school, we can begin to kind of take apart the scaffolds. This is a great place, you know, a great safe place to do that, to make sure they can kind of stand on their own. So when they get ready for the next step, they can be as successful as possible. So that's been kind of one of my goals, and that's why that zero's there. So just so you know, they're all here in Common Core, they just moved to a different committee.
Oh, go ahead, Laura.
Sorry, Richard, just back up with that other special ed enrollment. The moved in and moved out columns, are those because they've been declassified or more maybe they've left the district?
These people who moved in, the whole district. We have 11 students moved to different districts, yep. And then six moved in. And actually, the move to 504, we'll see towards the last place as far as classification rate, because that's gone down by reference to the fact that some students moved to section 504.
Richard, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
So there's still an option even with the various reforms initiatives for a local diploma?
There is. And that's complicated. If you want, I can take the board through it. It's a little, it's okay. So what happens?
So there's like the local, still the regions, and there's this CDOSS is for diplomas, and there's GED.
Well, the CDOSS isn't a diploma.
Okay, it's a certificate.
Certificate.
Right.
Because the IP had the word diploma in it, and it confused parents for 25 years. They thought they were getting a valid exit credential, and it does not count as a valid exit credential. You can't join the military with it, and you can't go to college with it. So what happens is that getting feedback from colleges, parents, and say, the Chamber of Commerce, the state realized they wanted to change that. Also realized the IP diploma, it was too wide a spectrum. So any encompassed students who are leaving here who may have, say, passed three regional exams or three RCTs but couldn't pass either two RCTs, also encompass the rest of the student at Anderson who is non-verbal, they both got the same diploma. So that didn't seem to be fair, because obviously, there are two qualitatively different people. So what they wanted to do is kind of divide those two populations out. So students who are with severe disabilities can get a skills achievement credential. And then students who have a higher level but may not be able to make simply the region safety net, we get the CDOSS. So as of right now, the RCTs are only grandfathered for current seniors. And after that, the state has instituted a new state in that, which is a 45 to 54 cash flow.
Right.
And everything but the NAMAs. So it still exists. They're still fairly, you know, still fairly accommodating, but it does, you know, definitely changes the whole landscape. So, do you want me to go into that more about that state in that options? You guys?
I don't care about that.
You okay? As far as the programs do, once again, things really haven't changed a whole lot. Like I said, one of the things I've appreciated in my years as a school psychologist is that we're a fairly inclusive, integrated place to be. So once again, we really kind of make the work inside the classroom. So pretty much, we have, you know, the programs haven't changed. We have the 112-1 integrated, it's over the chancellor. We have consultant teacher services. If there needs to be a special English map class for students who truly cannot connect with the material in any way, shape, or form, we can put one of those together for a handful of students. We still traditionally have the resource room at the high school. We have the learning center at the middle school. We have structured study halls for some students where we use teacher assistants. So some students may have a period of resource room daily and then a place of a kind of a study hall where they may need some more guidance. We may have a teaching assistant teacher structured study hall. So once again, as far as the programs through the three buildings, things have been fairly consistent. And actually, you know, the state wants us to move to high levels of integration. So really, that's the push. So, you know, that's something, once again, a strength from being here that's always kind of been our push ourselves. Once again, I mentioned it in my first floor presentation as far as, you know, special disorder students on the spectrum. We do have a reputation for working well and seeing successful students on the autism spectrum. And as you can see by our numbers, they've increased quite significantly over the years. They tend to be males, and they, not all of them, but some of them just tend to have a lot of very needy kind of individuals. They have executive functioning disorders, once again, attention, planning, kind of working with these teachers in the classroom can be difficult. So once again, those numbers have increased, and also, in some cases, they have high kind of management needs, certain costs of the debt. So once again, that's something a little stressing on the system, given the fact that overall classification rate has gone down. But with the increase of students on the spectrum, once again, the need as far as human resources is still quite high. And we have two students right now in the district, both classified autistic, who have 12 A's. So once again, that's a high level of staff support, you know, to make sure they're receiving a free and appropriate public education. Once again, as far as placements, you can see, once again, the numbers as far as residential BOSIs, private day, things really haven't changed a whole lot over the last several years. Conferences and the trainings with the teachers is fairly consistent, although we have been able to get some people in here from some, from the Carbon Clinic, which is a nice piece of carbon from Columbia, has a clinic, I think, down in Rockland County. So we've had some of his consultants come up here, work with us with some of the students and families. That's been pretty, that's actually worked out pretty well. Kind of added that to the thing. And also, once again, knowing that we have students on the spectrum, we've been able to bring in some people to work on more behavioral principles, especially a chancellor there. They tend to be a little bit more, you know, a little bit more messy. And to stay off really counseling, although a great technique for students who are older, you know, when someone's on the spectrum, they're second grade, who wants to be counseled, something's got to make it. So the teachers need more behavioral kind of management skills as far as tougher reinforcement economies, to make sure they're reinforcing the right behaviors instead of not reinforcing the proper behaviors. So that's been an area where we've been giving people some training, but that's a skill. It's not something everybody has when they go to college. Once again, as far as the talking points, like I said, I think things, once again, take the same. And I just think that, you know, once again, my goal to make sure is that obviously, students receive a free and appropriate public education, which is the goal of the special ed in the least restrictive environment possible, excuse me. Part of that, obviously, let's say, in the mission before, is that going through high school is that we want to kind of de-scaffold and take away the scaffolds and supports. Do that here while they're in a safe school. They know everybody here at the small school. Shouldn't the need arise in acute fashion where they need to have an additional support? It's easy enough to kind of segue it back in. I'd rather do that now and kind of work out some of the bumps than simply send them off to college where, as we all know, research says, you know, the first year, I think, you know, 33% don't make it. I don't want that to be the first time to take off the training wheels, and then someone's got to figure it out on their own. So that's why, once again, that's been my big push in the last three years as students come through, is to kind of take this apart slowly and simply give me the ability to adapt here while it's still a safe place to make some mistakes. Once again, going back to the number of students, 12, 13, with the regions, let's kind of fold it into that right there. I think the other thing that I think I'm proud of is obviously a classification, you see the top of that on the last page, is 9.7%. The state average right now is 13%. I talked to peers across the county. You know, the KIPSY was as high as 19, medical was as high as 15. Will meet with someone for a school psychology physician several years ago, they mentioned West Paulings was as high as 24%. You know, people are disproportionately classifying students through the CSE process, and I think through good intentions, they think it's like I mentioned, those teachers and parents here. You know, this isn't the extra help committee. This is a committee where I'm deciding childhood disability. And I take that very seriously because that's a civil right that the student has. I want to make sure that who do make that decision, all the data points point in the same direction. So I am proud of the fact that we have a low classification rate, 9.7. I know the state likes to keep it about 11, 10, 11. That seems about average. And once again, and over the last 10 years, I read some research last year, the state average is increasing about a percent a year, a percent every two years. So once again, we're actually running pretty well historically over the last several years, which I think, once again, is a strength of the program. And the other piece of data that I'm, once again, proud of is the fact that we don't have any CSC hearings out there at all. So once again, that takes up a lot of time. It's a boring process. It's not always a nice process. Once again, I do try to go out of my way to make sure I connect with parents, teachers, and students, to make sure we're meeting people's needs, providing the best program. My door is always open to listen to people. And once again, through some good, you know, solid communication, usually we work things out pretty well. So I like the fact that I'm not making photocopies in, it's been a damn court. Anyway, so really, so there hasn't been a whole many changes over the last three years from what I'd heard from Dr. Eba. And like I said, I do think one of my big questions, once again, is to de-scaffold students who come through the high school, give the program some breathing room and staff. So once again, when people, you don't have so many students classified in the sophomore, junior, and senior years, some of those resources can be pushed back down to middle school, where students tend to be, you know, things are just not as clean. And once again, it kind of helps support all these students who are looking forward to graduation. So I don't have anything much else to say.
Richard, you did mention in your report, and I want to make sure we at least recognize it, you have some data here regarding homeless students in English as a second language students. And I would want to point out that they're here not because they are special education classifications, but because they're Richard's responsibility to address them. So I wouldn't want anybody to make the mistake that we're identifying them as special education students. They are not. But they are, they are students with a different set of needs that we're required by law to address, and they're the purview of Richard's job responsibilities.
And you could see also, as far as ESL numbers, we stay fairly consistent, anywhere between eight, 10, 12 students a year. As far as students in, you know, who find themselves homeless, I know Marvin talked about this a couple of years ago with the board about the changing economy and just the recession, what that meant. And we saw a little uptick in 2011. So once again, I don't know if this represents, times are getting better, and people are finding more permanent housing, or what. I do know that it's, you know, two people is not, doesn't seem to be a crisis, although to them, it's obviously a major thing to deal with. So pretty much, once again, it was fairly consistent, also been past issues.
Please, sir. On the last page, under the heading suspension records, is that suspensions for classified students?
Yeah, so seven total students who are classified, and together they have a total of 28 days.
And how does that compare to statewide trends? Because I know there's been some discussion about this recently.
I couldn't speak to statewide trends. I do know, once again, that I'm talking to some peers in the county, typically specialist students tend to get suspended at a disproportionately high level, they're simply making mistakes. Given some of the classifications, either ADHD or E D, they tend to be more impulsive, make bad decisions, and things of that nature. I don't quite know what the state averages are. What I was going through this earlier in the day, I mean, from here and our records, you know, going back to the '06, '07 year, we had 11 students, 94 days. So I know that given our own trends, they're definitely going in the right direction south, which is nice. You know, but I don't know right now if they had overall state trends. But I do know the districts, there's a problem, once again, the students tend to be disproportionately suspended at simply high rates, whether it's due to the fact that they're classified and people are assuming that somehow it's a bigger problem, or just they're under the spotlight, it's hard to say.
Well, but, I mean, don't suspensions, don't suspensions also have something to do with the way that the staff deal with the students? Because that's a determination that's made by the staff dealing with the students.
It is. And typically, too, with the specialist students, I can say from, you know, being a school psychologist working in the district, knowing everybody, people become incredibly very flexible, is a good word. So usually, you know, there are things that maybe they wouldn't tolerate from someone who is, say, nor a typical person. So if you're working with a student who's E D, you've got to realize that in order to help the student progress through meeting learning standards and not be a victim of his own mistakes, you end up kind of rolling some of that to a fat degree. So I do know that that happens a lot in these programs, where you kind of pick and choose your battles. So, you know, it's kind of a give and take, so to speak.
Okay.
But once again, you do have specialist students who then say, in a class with someone who not, the teacher, simply isn't, you know, doesn't know the background, that can go up some, some tension in the system.
Any other questions for Richard? Thank you very much. I, you know, I just really want to thank you also for running a really positive, well-functioning program. I know it's highly regulated, there's a lot of different funding sources and paperwork, as well as a lot of different types of students with a lot of different needs. And, you know, I think this is a program we can be proud of. As you said, the number of impartial hearings indicates that, you know, people are feeling that they're getting their needs satisfied. And so, you know, your approach to the students as they approach graduation here, I think, is really valuable. And, you know, I just would also ask that you always consider what needs you have that this school board can help you meet, you know. We have talked in every department, and I know, I'm sure Joe has communicated this to you as well, that like, you know, thinking outside the box, or wish lists, or, you know, just always keep in mind that we want to support you and all the teachers in your department. So anything that can help you be more successful at any time, please just do know that we want to support you.
Definitely. I think the one thing if I could ask is that, looking at research, it's pretty clear for most students that separate is not equal. So when you take students, you put them into BOSI's classroom, nothing against BOSI's, because they're there for a reason. Typically, a lot of the students are just very typical students. Whenever you leave a general ed setting, you really are taking a different course. So learning changes, the pace changes, the cadence changes, it's really, it comes to apples and oranges. And part of what I would love for the board to do is simply, I think, you know, support the fact that I believe that as full inclusion as possible. So when people may come and not understand quite why certain students in their class and it makes things a little bit difficult, that in the long run, it's really about the student, and that that's the best place for them to be, because that's how we get maximized outcomes. And that when people believe that there's a place to go that's better, typically, there isn't better. And one of the things I'd have to manage of, excuse me, being a school psychologist here when I worked with Dr. Eba, is I went to all the different BOSI's programs. I've been to Oprah Friends Academy, I've been to Cleveland, I've been to Pathways in New Jersey, I've been to most of these schools, and pretty much, you know, they're just regular schools with teachers doing just regular work. So once again, there's nothing, there's no real magic bullet program. So that's why, once again, I like the fact that I try to support the students in the classroom to the greatest extent possible, and not try to build something that's kind of a parallel universe, because once you do that, they will go there, and it's not the same educational rigor. So that's kind of, you know, if anything I could ask, the board to simply support the fact that we are all in to the greatest extent possible.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think also, over the years, you know, at least I can speak for myself, or just my understanding of special education, there are questions always at the early grades about pulling out or pulling in, or, you know, sometimes we've tried classes that are, you know, special education classes, and, but I think to also speak to the older grades and the kids as they, and their needs, and not traveling out of the school and their social needs to be in with their peers, is an important reminder for us and seems like an important goal.
Sure.
Yeah. Very good. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Richard.
All right. So we move on now to our next report, and that is the 2014-15 budget development update.
As we had promised you earlier in our, in our process, we're putting together the board budget calendar, we're mirroring our process from last year, which was significantly different in a number of ways, but primarily in terms of the timeline with which we're bringing forth various drafts of the budget. And the board felt, and I think after the process reinforced the fact that starting earlier had a number of advantages in providing the additional time for the board to ask questions, look at certain expenditures, especially maybe expenditures that we were requesting or proposing that we weren't already doing. I would take the opportunity, though, to remind those of you who were part of the process last year, and bring those of you who aren't up to speed, that there is a downside to the process, to doing that. And the downside being that with the process that provides you with a rollover budget in December and a first draft budget at the beginning of January, the earlier you start the process, the more guesswork is involved in doing this work, the more educated guesses, but guesses nonetheless Tom has to make in forecasting what the increase in expenditures of these programs might be, because we don't know yet. A lot of these figures, we won't get until later in January, or February, or even March in some, in some cases. You know, for, you know, an example would be our health insurance, our projected health insurance costs through D HIC. We're ballparking them this early in the process. They won't make that decision until early to mid-March, I believe. So I think the point being that we're now in a process of extended tweaking. And that's really what we're going to be doing between now and early April, is saying, well, you know what, we got the final cost on that, and that means we can reduce our budget by X, or it came in higher than we estimated, so we have to bump it up by X. So you're going to see that back and forth. We try to plan it so there's more back and less forth, if you know what I mean. We're trying to, we try to plan this process so we're in a position of estimating conservatively now, so that we get a final figure where we're reducing our budget, which has some, you know, some, it gives the board some options in terms of what the impact on the tax levy is going to be, and balancing that with what we have been discussing along the process to enhance our programs. So that's, there's an opportunity there to improve our programs and to, and at the same time, to balance that with stabilizing what the tax impact of our budget's going to be. And to do all of that within the constraints of the state tax levy cap, which is an external guideline that we always have to keep in the back of our minds as we're massaging these expenditures and these revenues. So Tom, I, you know, by way of introduction, and unless, unless board members have a desire, and I would suggest it's probably not timed that well spent this early in the process, I would suggest that Tom spend a few minutes giving an overview of kind of where we are since we provide you with the rollover budget in early December, and now about five weeks later, we're giving you the first draft budget that has inputs that weren't available when we did the rollover budget. For example, by our recent vacation, all of the building principals and Richard Zip and Marvin Krebs, you know, all the managers and principals who are in charge of a chunk of the budget have provided Tom with their requests. So this is a reflection, if nothing else, of their requests, whereas the rollover budget was just, take what we have this year, ballpark some increases, and roll it over. So there's, this is one step more refined than the last, the rollover budget that you got. So maybe Tom could give us an overview, because this is going to change so much over the next two and a half to three months, that I think, I think doing line item by line item is probably not particularly a good use of time. But Tom, why don't you give us an overview, and then, you know, certainly if there are questions, we can answer them, either start answering them now and be answering them over the course of the next, every meeting, we'll be discussing this budget. So we'll have opportunity to answer specific questions.
Well, thank you very much. And you're right, there will be more ups and downs, but hopefully, they won't be large ups and significant downs as we go along. I'll go through, and there are a couple of places in which, just to let you know that, you know, there's some incomplete data yet, and as we go through, I'll note some of those things. And as we go through the first page, you see there's very little changes. As we go through here, the salaries that are marked in here are based on the increases from this year. So that's just bringing them up to this year's salary. So on the first page, really not a whole lot. I did add $1,000 to travel and conference for the Board of Ed, considering this year we went over budget on that. And if, I think it's very valuable for you guys to go to the annual conference. So wanted to make sure that there was money set aside for that. If we move over onto the second page, there is a large increase. You'll see under 1310160, that's for the business office. And maybe I have the person, we're a personnel assistant, we're going through a hiring process right now, which we informed you in the fall. Don't really know if they belong in the business administration, being instead of personnel, and I may move that later. But we're looking with that on top of the payroll increases from this past year. So if we move over on to page three, no changes in there, very minimal type of things, just increases as far as BOSI services. Some of these are guestimates with BOSI's. I was able to get some of the actual cost of the service guide that I think, I'm not sure if you've all received that. I know BOSI's has prepared a service guide for you guys, so.
Did you get them at home as board members, BOSI's service guide?
Okay.
Because I don't think we've gotten.
You haven't gotten them yet, because I haven't gotten my own yet, but I've gone online, pulled it down. But typically, we'd have the initial service request already, but the BOSI's business office has been going through some changes, and their person was out for two months, and in the meantime, someone had left their job. So they had intrums in there. So they're a couple of weeks behind where they typically are. But I was able to deduce from the service guide basically what those costs are going to be. At the bottom, under operation and maintenance, the first line, 1620, we see a decrease. That is due to a retirement of a custodian and the person being, so we have a savings there in that particular item. Moving over to four, this is being with operation and maintenance with Sheldon. He's kept everything in line with where they were last year, slight increases for BOSI's in personnel, but fuel costs and electricity, he believes where he is currently works well. We were hit with some very cold weather recently, but also, again, we've been hit with warm weather at times, too. So we really don't know what the cost effect of this winter has been. Actually, prices of fuel oil have gone down since the beginning, so that's been very helpful. It's always helpful when that goes down. But we'll keep it closer on that. Mr. Teeter does not believe he needs an increase in fuel oil or electricity, and really can manage with the budget he has. If he can get additional monies, he can do additional repairs and that. But that's something we've talked about in facilities. And we'll see where the budget process goes to see whether or not we can put more money into his program, especially making repairs that would be cost effective doing them now as opposed to making, letting them break three years from now and it costing us a lot more in an emergency. On page five, you'll see an increase in BOSI's services under 1680490, but you'll see a decrease in the central data processing above. It's not a quite offset of each other, but what happened over this past year, we did have a part-time computer tech, and we've decided to go to BOSI's instead because of their expertise, and we have them one day a week, as opposed to not having anything. So we've really swapped out a internal person for BOSI's for their expertise that they can bring to us. Another item, the last one on the page, under admin, BOSI's, we, I'm taking a guesstimate of 5%, 5.5%. That's where that initial service request is helpful, to give me exactly what it is. It's unable to tell from the service guide what our cost is. So hopefully, that actually will be lower. I'd like to go towards the high side on those.
In fact, I could interrupt you there for a minute. The thing you just pointed out, which was contracting with BOSI's for some computer tech services, one area that I expect to see some changes that aren't purely driven by getting prices firmed up, is in the area of technology. We just recently brought our new director of technology onboard, and, you know, while he's jumped in with both feet, in a lot of areas, he is working with Tom to provide some inputs into this budget. Some of them, I expect, will be things that will impact this. Some of them, I expect, will be things that will impact this, this operational budget that you have in front of you. Some of them are things that will likely migrate over to the, to the wish list that we started developing, and may or may not be things we can do in the coming year. So, I, I've just given you a heads up that, given his relatively short duration here with us, Steve is just starting to, to have those conversations with Tom. So, I would think if there are areas of this budget, you're going to see some changes that are not based on firming up costs. It will be in, in technology-related areas. So, just, just, just a heads up on that.
And to remind you, we do have $150,000 in grant money set aside to help address technology needs from wireless to computers and that. So, there is money set aside, so it's a matter of how we approach this. So, it's not like it's all going to go into the budget. We do have money set aside from last year that we are, is earmarked for technology. So, all right. So, if we switch over to page six, the second line down is Curriculum Development All District. This is for curriculum writing that takes place over the summer typically. Mr. Krebs is looking for an increase of $30,000 to attack the Common Core curriculum. We also do have monies in the federal funds, but last year, as you see, we only had $45,000 budgeted for that. We basically used up all our federal monies.
The carryover?
Carryover monies from other years. So, he isn't going to have carryover money, so that was a one-time shot to, to do that. Now, it's, the federal funds will be typical in adding additional monies to that. So, overall, it'll be more than $75,000, but that's where he felt the general fund would need to be, to, in addition to the federal grant monies. But he'll, he'll have more to say. He's still trying to take a look to see what curriculum writing is going to be done, but he knows there's a lot to be done. So, and, uh, through the rest of this, you'll see that there's in the, a major decrease in the 2020160, and that was due to a transfer, which really is the effect of Ms. Potter retiring this past year, moving a, a, a high, a person that was high on the salary schedule over to the Special Ed Department, replaced by a less salaried new employee. There are some things, just to give you an answer, I don't have all of the answers yet, but I'm still getting them. The third one from the bottom, other expenses in the high school, we see an increase of $11,000. I'll get an answer what that increase is, because there are a couple items that we still, with all the snows and trying to coordinate schedules, haven't been able to sit down with everybody to find out exactly what some of these increases are. As we go on to the next page, in-service is a slight increase for the Travel and Conference as curriculum opportunities and, as the APPR is implemented, and additional training is needed for teachers also. There is an increase for the Travel and Conference for, for the teachers. When we get to the next areas, and this is for teaching, you'll see pluses and minuses all over the place as far as that's concerned. I have taken into consideration those, um, the, the retirements that we do know of and have been noted to us, so those have been taken into account.
This reflects?
This reflects the six retirements that have been approved by the Board to date. One of the things you'll see there, and I'm going to have to go back, and, and by the time we see a second draft, I, I talked about getting the, getting the teachers into their correct grades and everything, and I thought he did a good job. Guess what? I made a mistake. Everybody's accounted for. I just put him in the wrong buildings. When I saw two classes in the middle school, I did 40% to the middle school, not realizing this person also had five other classes in the high school. It's on the middle school schedule because the eighth grade students are taking freshman courses. So, they're just there for his knowledge, not the pay center. So, I have to go back through, but everybody's accounted for. The line before, you see a new line for $10,000. This is for credit recovery. This was with Dr. Davenport with the, was it pre-algebra? I don't know which one. It's a math course that needing additional time with, with teachers to, to help get the students through the math courses. So, all right.
That's, that's the first Common Core high school course.
Oh, okay.
That, that's why the emphasis on that.
Right. Okay. Over on to the second page, about, mine would say halfway down, it hits halfway down in high school equipment. We'll see a new, it's not a new line, but $33,500 in equipment for special education. And that's special, sorry, physical education. We'll, Dr. Davenport is going to write up exactly what those things are, so that you will know what that's about and see whether or not that is something that the Board will entertain, because that is a large increase. It doubles the amount of equipment that we typically spend. I think it's for cardiovascular type of machines and things of that nature. It's a matter of planning it, where can it go, that type of a thing, I don't, so there'll be a whole plan made up and to, and to present to you. Nothing else on this page really stands out along that line, you know, pretty much kept in check along the lines. I do want to indicate to you that, you know, textbooks is an increase of about 9%, over $100,000. But the, the, they are taking a look to see whether or not there are books they can purchase this year so we can take it out of next year's budget, because right now, we're currently under the textbooks limit right now in the current year. A lot of books that they're looking for aren't available yet to match up to the Common Core, so that's a little bit of an issue right now. We have the money available, the books just aren't there for us to purchase, or there's very few of them to look at. If we move over on to page 10, the BOSI's code, you'll see a spike of $40,000. As much as Mr. Zip was showing us the decrease in special education tuitions, we have a number of general education students who are now attending BOSI's, which has increased. We went from zero to start the year, and we're up to three right now. So, that's something.
Is this for AC?
No, this is for ABC program, alternate high school, students who are having a tough time here in this building are going to BOSI's, but are not classified. So, but overall, when we look at the total regular school, which is instruction, we're only seeing an increase of a little over 1% at the bottom of page 10. If we turn over to page 11, and this is for special education, and you'll see two big decreases. Halfway through, you'll see tuition other. These are students who attend private special education schools, like the center. There has been some changes. You'll see a decrease there. We've had a few kids age out. We've had a couple of kids move out, but in the likewise, we've got one very high-cost student came in, and right now, Mr. Zip is doing CPS meet meetings on two students who are coming into this, into, or aging into kindergarten, and he indicated to me on Monday, after this was all done, that possibly they're going to be placed. Now, I had to unanticipated placements there. That would just fill those places up, and I, if somebody was to move in, I wouldn't have funds for them. So, we'll have to take a look, I'll have to wait for Mr. Zip to get done with that and make a recommendation. So, that number may move up a little bit. Under the BOSI Services, the negative $100,000, that looks very good. The people that were looking for CPSE are not, they're going to be in private placements. They wouldn't be going into a BOSI's program, so that is a fairly definitely a decrease that we, we can definitely count on. So, overall, we see the program for students with disabilities decreasing by $145,000, which is, which is nice. The next line is OCD. I got the service guide today. I anticipated a 3% increase. OCD has gone up 10%. That is really an outlier there, but, but we don't know how many students. Once I get the ISR, the Initial Service Request, I send that to the Finsley Principals, then they'll send it to the Guidance Department, and then they will be able to tell me how many students they have slotted to go to the OCD program. Right now, we have 20 kids in there budgeted. That, that may be going down a little bit, so that may be helpful, even though the price might be going up per student. I think the number of kids attending is, is decreasing, and we had an initial spike a couple of years ago. We flip over to page 12, Adult Education, took it completely out of the budget, so decrease there. There's also a decrease on the revenue side. Library.
Can I just clarify, because we do have people who watch this?
Yes.
Later, the town of Reinbeck, right, is taking over the, what existing programs we had here?
They have taken over the sports programs, volleyball.
Volleyball and adult basketball.
Basketball.
Okay.
But there have been questions about driver's ed. We just, we don't have a driver's ed course at all. They'll have to look at other schools, whether it be Red Hook or, or Hyde Park to, for, for that. There just wasn't enough, and even.
Sure.
The past couple of years, when we tried to put a group together, it just didn't get enough people to even break even. And we held the courses, but it didn't break even, so unfortunately, they'll have to, at this time, find someplace else unless there's an overwhelming need. We could look to put something together real quickly.
Thank you.
Under library and, and audiovisual, this past year, we've went to a new automated system. It's working out good, but Mr. Jensen is, is looking at that system and may have a recommendation for us later on to, to do that, make change how we're doing that. So, and if we go on to page 13, this is the Computer-Assisted Instruction. You know, there isn't too many changes here. The first line is the salaries for the administrator, and I included an additional $10,000 in computer services, just figuring the cost of doing businesses going up, but this and there, that could be sliding back. This is an area that, that me and Steve have to sit down and thoroughly go through, and we started that process, just the numbers aren't totally reflected in here yet. No real changes in attendance. We go on to the next page, Health Services, our, our guidance, just salary increases. We go down to the Health Services, and once again, it's salary increases, but there's a change between the buildings. There's more of a need up here for the LPN. She spends about 75% of her time up here and 25% down in the, in the elementary school, so that just reflects those changes there. And also, there's an increase in there, just to let everybody know, and that's, we've had to provide nursing services for athletes, in the case of one of the athletes who's diabetic. So, the, the nurse does take some readings and things of that nature to keep an eye on that, so that, that's, that's why there, a little bit more of an increase there. Also, I added $10,000 to Health Services. Hopefully, I'll be able to cut this back a little bit. This is for students who attend schools outside of our school district. We owe for the nursing, psychologist, social worker, we get a portion of those bills. When a student attends something like Lord's, Duchess Day School, the local school district provides health services. We get back billed for those particular services, so, so we've seen an increase over the past year.
So, these are Reinbeck students?
Reinbeck students attending private or parochial schools and other school districts. Going over to page 15, there is one increase here, and this is under the social worker. This is one of, this, we got two social workers. The federal grants do pick up a, a good, not the entire portion, but a good portion of their salary, but what's been happening is our federal grants have been decreasing, so they're picking up less and less of it. So, the general fund is having to pick up more of their cost. On page 16, when we look at Athletics, overall increase of about 2%. We're going to look a little bit closer at that. I'm going to sit down with Mr. Boucher. We're going to see if we can decrease the cost of the coaches. I think I've kind of double-counted one or two of them, so we're going to go through that list all again to make sure that we got all the coaches, and I don't have any extra ones in there. I think I might have one or two extra coaches in there. There, if we take a look at the transportation, you'll see basically a break even there. And this is an area that is, the bid opening, as you know, we went out to contract, went out for bid services, the bid opening is this Thursday afternoon. Won't have the results Thursday afternoon, just to let you know, but that's when we're opening. Sometime next week, we'll actually have the results and be able to make a determination as to where it's, where those prices are. But overall, I did increase it 5% per run, just to be on the safe side, but where we're seeing savings is on the special education transportation. We're not transporting to as many different settings as we have in the past, so we've been able to cut back on the number of transportation runs for the handicap portion of our program. So, that, that, that helps us out. And also, under BOSI's transportation, that may even be eliminated. I just did a first draft of that. They did provide transportation for us in the past. This used to be a shuttle bus that used to go between the Beta Site and Salt Point. We don't have anybody doing that anymore, so as long as that's not happening, there's no cost to us. But I just got to make sure, I have to sit down with Dr. Davenport and with Richard to make sure we're not going to have any students who are being transported between those campuses. That's what that cost was for. Go over on to page 17, which is our employee benefits. The New York State Employees Retirement System has pretty much stayed on even keel, may even gone down a little bit, the salaries have gone up. The Teacher Retirement System, their rate right now is estimated at 17.75%, just to give you an idea. The other number that you should know is Workers' Comp. I won't, I'll know that number mid-February, what Workers' Comp is going to look like. I, I went for about a 10% increase. Some indications, it may be going down, actually. They're changing the rules in New York State, so we'll see what effect that has on us, even though, as you'll know later on in the, in the thing, we're looking at a Workers' Comp reserve. There is an unfunded liability that the school district has, but that doesn't relate to the rates here. Rates and that unfunded liability are two separate things. With the health insurance, I currently have that as an 8%. It'll be no greater than an 8% increase in our, in our, in our, in our rates, so we're hoping it comes down. This year, D-HIC and Empire have taken a different stance. I used to be a part of the negotiations. They decided they really only want two or three people on each side versus 10 and 10. It's just, it's just too many people, it's unwieldy. They're cutting it down to just like three and three, that way. But, so I won't know ahead of time exactly what's going on, but I'm sure Mr. Martin will let me know as soon as possible. If we switch over to the second, the last page, the biggest thing to say, see here is the, is our debt service. As you know, last year, we refinanced and started to save on approximately $60,000 a year, but that $60,000 is already in the budget this year, so you're not saying like an extra $60,000, but we are seeing a small decrease of about $2,000. And as we put the whole item together, we're looking at slightly under a million-dollar increase, $996,000, which equates to a 3.29% budget to budget. Any questions about the expenditure side, or additional information you're looking for, for the next, if I don't have it now, I'll make sure I get that to you?
Diane?
Thanks, Tom. I have a couple of questions. When you mentioned the health services for other districts going up 22%, is that the actual cost of health going up 22% or your, or the number of students going to other districts?
It's a combination of both. It's actually. It's actually, we have a few more students than in the past couple of years, so there's a little bit of an increase to the number of kids or the number of students that we're paying for. But one of the things that's unfortunately out of our control is how the other school district determines what the per pupil cost is. And we've noticed that that typically goes up quicker than anything else, because that's how they get revenue. So if I see it going up more than 5%, I question that school district as to how that's possible. But typically, it's been an increase in the rates and a slight increase in the number of students. So I think we're slightly under-budgeted this year, and that's why I'm trying to make up a little bit extra, too. I think about five grand under and then anticipating additional $5,000. Unfortunately, you don't, you don't know how many people are actually going to be there in there. I mean, it does change. It's, as much as you, you don't know if there's going to be more children going or not. You just don't know. That's a parental decision, and, you know, fortunately, you don't always know.
And then I had some questions about historical costs, but we can talk about that after. Specifically for the electric cost, you had it not increasing for next year. But historically, we've been using less and less electricity every year. We've been cutting down that line item, and we're still using less. And this year, we're changing all the lights outside, so you would anticipate we're even going to use less again.
Yeah, I have a good idea that both the fuel, oil, and electricity will be coming down as we go through this process. I agree with you. We are using less electricity. I don't, and I don't think anybody's anticipating any great spike in the rates, and our electrical usage is going down quite a bit, actually. It's been, it's nice to see, because I can see what the bill was last year versus this year. Don't so much look at the rates, but I look at how much energy we used. And I've been really pleased with how well the school district is handling that, so.
But we only gain that advantage if we budget less for it?
Yep. No, no, and that's one of the things I have to do, and I know the Finance Committee has asked me to do that, is to tighten the budget up, and that's how I'm going to do it, through there, and there's salaries, too. That's my next step, is to now, now that I have it the way it typically is, I am now going to go through and pare back where I can, so that in spending 96%, we're going to get more towards the 98% that I think the Finance Committee is looking for, that we're spending about 98% of the budget.
And the only, the other, I had some, again, some historical costs, but for the internal auditor, it's about the same as it was last year. However, we had always planned on, historically, the budget was for a risk assessment, a yearly risk assessment, and a focused audit, but we no longer need to do a yearly risk assessment. So theoretically, it could be half that cost going forward.
True. I was waiting to meet with the Audit Committee, determine what you are looking at and what you're, what you would like us to do for next year as far as budgeting for that, so.
Any other questions on this part of the?
Given all you need to learn from Steve Jensen and the technology expenditures and implementing self-audit and plan for that, do you feel like this is way under-budgeted, way over-budgeted? Comfortable with it?
I'm comfortable with it, but I think there's a lot of major decisions that need to be made here in the next few months to really put that area together. First of all, is, one of the things that's happening is the XP machines, the computers, the XP computers, which there are quite a few of them, especially at the elementary level. They're no longer going to be supportive. So those have to be switched out. Or if they're not switched out, if there happens to be a Microsoft issue with XP, and whether it's malware or something like that, they're not going to touch it. You're going to have to live with it. Try to come up with your own, or maybe find somebody who will try to do that. So that's a concern that we have to look at, is what do we do with those XP machines? Then the second question is, what do we replace them with? And I think that's where Steve and the administration and board has to make the decision, is what are we going to replace computers with? Tablets, laptops, desktops? I don't know. Steve has not come up with a recommendation yet at all levels, and I think that's really going to be the major driver, is, you know, what are we going to be replacing these with? We know we're going with wireless, but what are we having? A tablet, a Kindle, a laptop, a desktop? We don't know that yet.
Right.
And I think that's the major thing to determine, really what that true cost is. Is it a one-to-one model? You know, those are the things that have to be determined. And I think that also works with curriculum. I mean, that's really the important part. How is instruction going to be delivered? And those, once those questions are answered, then we can, we can do a budget around that. I would, I don't, and Steve, Mr. Jensen's also indicated, he just doesn't want to get something because, he wants to make sure that this is the way that curriculum will be delivered, and that's just not to go out and just get it just because. You have to take a look at how we're going to deliver that instruction and then determine how best to meet those needs.
Yeah, he may wind up coming up with a phased plan over the course of-
Yeah, and I'm sure it'll be a phased plan.
-X number of years, so, and how the first year may impact this document is, that part's still a work in progress.
We do have, you know, we do have, we haven't really done a large lease purchase in a while with Bosie's-
For computer technology?
For computer technology. And typically, what that does is, let's say you want to buy $100,000 worth of computer equipment. It's on a three-year lease purchase, so we're only paying 1/3 of that $100,000 a year, plus interest. But at this time, interest rates are actually very good, so that even though he may come out and say, you know, we need to purchase $100,000 worth of equipment, if we do it through Bosie's and do a lease purchase, well, we're only going to really hit 1/3 of that in the first year, but you got to budget 1/3 and 1/3 for the next two years. So, but that's a good way to get a jump and to get what you need now and pay it off over three years. So it's a good way of doing it. I mean, a lot of school districts do that. In fact, I think just about all school districts do that, that way, because it helps in the replacing with technology, too, if you're just not, oh, we don't have the money, let's not do anything, and all of a sudden, you got a crisis and bam, well, you know, we need half a million dollars. You know, this is a way to spread that over the three years. So we have quite a money that's built into this budget already for those lease purchases plus the money we have in the grants. And those monies in the grant, too, for if we're doing purchase of equipment, they can be used, done the same way, too. We can purchase with the grant money outright, or we can use it to pay the grant off for the lease purchase over three years, so it can work both ways.
Any other questions? Okay. You have more documents here, right?
Yeah. Let's go to the tax levy limit. And really, nothing has changed since the last time. We have the 70% growth rate factor, which is the second highest in the county, which was nice to see. The allowable growth levy, which is about 2/3 of the way through, I have it 1.5. That number should be here in the next day or two. I'm surprised I haven't gotten a notice from SED yet what that number is. Usually, it's about this time, middle of January, we see that, but-
What are you basing the 1.5 on?
What the, the towns are at 1.6 this past year, and I kind of figured we were slowing down just a little bit more, and went with 1.5. And that's what a lot of people were saying, go with the 1.5. They do think it might be a little bit higher. I just figured, do a little bit conservative. I didn't want to go too far down.
A little birdie told me tonight that it's going to be 1.56.
1.56? All right, so-
We'll see whether the birdie knew what-
Okay.
She was talking about.
All right, good, good. We also had the carryover from last year of over $162,000. Remember, those are monies that we did not raise last year. Those are monies under the tax levy limit. And as we go over to the next page, basically, you know, what we're looking at from last year was a maximum allowable levy of just slightly over $26.2 million. And this would indicate a additional tax levy increase of $707,000 or 2.70%. So that's what we're looking at right now.
That would be within the tax levy cap?
That's within the tax levy cap. Right, correct. This should get really finalized pretty soon. Once we have that number and once we have state aid runs, we'll be able to figure out also what that local capital expenditure line is. I'm keeping them equal. Don't know how that's going to change yet. So that would be, so you have two factors that still need to be incorporated into it, and that's going to be the allowable tax levy group of, we heard, probably 1.56, we'll see. And then the local capital expenditures, and that's based off their state aid numbers, so we'll, we'll have to see where that goes. So if we now go to the last document, which is the first draft of the revenue budget, just really hit a couple highlights. I took out $7,000 for the Continuing Education Program. You don't have an adult education program, and we're not going to get any revenues coming in, so that was eliminated, and that goes to zero. I've also decreased earnings and interest by $10,000. The, hopefully, interest rates will rebound at some point, so I'm just lowering expectations at this moment. Everything else seems to be pretty much in line, and if we go on to the second page, first, I will say that in the state aid area, I did increase a 2%, except in one place, and that's the other tax aid. That's for high tax aid, which is at $100,000, and that number hasn't changed. The only thing I hope is it doesn't go away, which they did take away last year, but then they put it back in. So we'll have to see, when the state aid run comes out, what, what the governor has in store for us for the high tax aid. If the full basic formula had been put in place, we'd have another $550,000. Sorry. Everybody's missing that piece, chunk of money. It would be nice if we would get at least what was in law, but we don't. I didn't change anything with the appropriate fund balance, or transfer from the debt service. I've got done the same. That will be a discussion with the Finance Committee as we go through this process. But if we go back over to the first page, we'll see the property taxes going up 3.73% based on this, and this first draft, which is $244,000 above the tax levy limit at this time. More to play with, more to go with this. We'll be able to bring the expenditures down. I know on the, on the expenditure side, which will help this number go down, so I think we won't, we'll be able to get underneath this, that levy without any type of cuts. It's just a matter of sharpening, sharpening the pencil, going back and taking a look at various areas that I know have historically been over-budgeted, and based on what the Finance Committee has asked me to do, I'm going to go now, go back and start pairing back in the areas that I know that we aren't going to spend much.
So any questions additionally on the other documents, the revenues and the gap in the current budget to budget tax levy increase and the tax levy limit as estimated? Okay. Do you-
Just other questions, but pertaining to this. In the book that you just handed out, you gave us historical data, and-
Oh, there's more to come, that's for sure.
Are you going to go over historical? No, no.
No, no, I mean, if you have questions, please, yes.
One specific one, because it was a master's, too, and I don't remember if I asked it or not. For 2012-13 auditor, external auditor, you had $77,000. Was it supposed to be $17,000?
You know what that is? I know what it is. This is where the auditor put the money. This was where the refinancing. The refinancing was about an additional $50,000, so he decided to put it in auditing for the refinancing. So that's why it looks higher than it should. I think what I'll do, and to do that, is I should take it out of auditing and really put it to the Business Department, because that's-
Into the what?
Into the, to the Business Office. I mean, that's, it should be in Finance, it shouldn't be in Auditing, but that's where he decided to put it. I wasn't going to argue with him, but you're right. It does kind of throw things off when you look at it historically. Anywhere you look at it, it's going to throw things off historically, but you're going to say, what, auditing that much? What, what happened? No. If I put it into Financing, you see a spike in that one year. Oh, yeah, that's when we refinanced the bonds. So that additional expense was for refinancing the bonds.
And in the prior two years, there was actual expenses for the internal auditor, but we didn't have an internal auditor.
Is it a small amount, like two grand?
Five to eight grand.
What page is it?
Under Historical Data, page 2. Under Internal Auditor.
Because we do have an Internal Claims Auditor.
No. And it was there last year, too. 2010, 11, 11, 12.
Let me go back and research that. I know the bottom line works out right.
More to come on that one. And then I'm just trying to put some of the information together. In the audit, when we talked about Central Services, having, on the Schedule 1, there was a large variance between what we budgeted and what we ended up with, and we were talking about, can we use that money for replacement of floors, et cetera? And we had stated that a lot of that variance was from electricity and fuel.
Correct.
Where, where is that money now?
In the fund balance.
It just drops down.
Yeah, everything goes into the fund balance, yep.
Okay. And so how did it, so Central Services in the Schedule 1 for the audit is, you know, budgeted over $2 million. That's everything in Central Services.
Correct.
And you're saying the majority of that $200,000 is from fuel, electricity?
Fuel and electricity, yep. And there was some monies, last year, there was hardly any snow, so we actually saved quite a bit on the overtime, too. So snow removal last year was minimal. This year, not so much.
Well, if you wait a few days, it rains enough.
Well, unfortunately, can't wait a few days before the rain to come.
All right, last question. Because we are talking about Tax Certs tonight, I thought I remembered historical data on Tax Certs in-
1964.
Budget manual. Not going back that far, just the last five years.
No, 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 it's in A 1964, so if you're looking for-
Not the year.
Not the year. It's going to be on page 5.
Quite a lot there.
About the second go from people.
My goodness.
You got me there, Tom.
All right. So it's the second line from the bottom, starting with 41, then 15, 142.
Refund real tax.
And then 58. And this year, it's about 50 right now.
All right, so 2010. In your email, it said that we had no expenses in 2010, and in our audits-
Now, this is, in 2010, we used budgetary money. We did not use the Tax Cert Reserve. So in that year, we had extra money, we just did it right, right to the fund balance, as opposed to drawing down the tax reserve that year.
Okay.
Because it was a small amount. They just, we just did it as a, to the fund balance, as opposed to the Tax Cert Reserve.
Okay. All right, that makes the numbers make more sense. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, then? All right, Tom, this has been really thorough, going through this, this first draft budget, and a lot of good information about what needs to be refined over time. We look well-positioned right now. Of course, I know things can change as numbers firm up, but thank you for, for a good informative presentation.
You bet.
Great. And everyone will just be filing your documents in your binder.
And you'll start getting more pages.
And if you fall behind in filing, it really is a drag, so I advise you to-
Get big rubber bands.
As someone who has fallen behind.
Yeah, I do, do want to thank Tom for paginating these documents and for dating- Yeah, I do want to thank Tom for paginating these documents and for dating the documents and continuing to do that will help us all keep our binders in...
Good order.
In good order, yeah.
Well, he added, like, first draft, second draft, third draft, and that, so...
Right, that helps, too.
Though I did have a question about that. You know, because you're going to have the tax levy limit, you're going to have a revenue, and you're going to have an expenditure side, so you're going to get these three documents every draft we do. You don't want to separate out first draft at the tax levy limit, second draft at the... I mean, do you want it all together as just, here's the first draft, here's the second draft, here's the third draft, and it's all together? Okay, all right. Bye.
Great. Thank you. We move on now to our mid-year review of 2013-14 board goals, and in your packet are...is a copy of our board goals that we adopted in September, and then board goals with strategies. And then Joe shared with us, well, a copy of his administrative goals that align with the board goals. Would anyone like to reflect, take this moment to reflect a little bit on the progress we're making or not making towards our board goals?
Well, I would just start the ball rolling, and even though it's already mentioned this evening, recognize that we have made significant progress in hiring a Director of Technology who, even in the short amount of time that he's been here, I think has brought some real value to the organization. You know, he's simultaneously looking at what will support and improve our program, but also what, also doing it in a way that's very cost-conscious. So I mean, he's really, he's, you know, we hadn't given him a blank check, and he's not gotten wild and crazy on us. I mean, he's saying, you know, we could save some money here, and that will free up money to do this. So I mean, I like the way, the way he's thinking. He's, I think, going down the right, the right road with that. Again, I want to make, you know, I just want, want to be careful that we, while we want to move ahead on these initiatives, I don't want him to feel like we're expecting him to do much, do too much too soon, and then we're spending subsequent years kind of backtracking. So I'm trying to give him that message that, you know, we want his expertise in planning this out, but in a thoughtful way, that we don't expect him to do everything overnight and to do this well. It's going to be, you know, a long process. And while he's getting, you know, our house in order in terms of the technology, kind of flipping into another one of the goals, he's also started to make some, I think, some good progress in working with me and with the Communications Committee in putting together a communications plan going forward that kind of melds communication itself with using the technology to communicate. So he's weaving those two things together, which he should be, but it takes time. I'm impressed with what he's done in a relatively short period of time. So I think that's, that's been some good progress here. I just want to recognize that.
Thank you. Thank you for helping the board to reflect on its own goals. Do any board members have any comments? Lisa.
I think that with, for three of the four goals that we have, that we actually seem to be making good strides to accomplish what we set out to do in September. I mean, nobody expects all of the goals to be met in the middle of the year, but I think that for the first three, we've done some of the things that we said we were going to do, and we're heading down the road to do others of those things. So I think we should be pretty pleased about that. Food service, I think, continues to be an area where progress is slower than we'd like to see it be. And I know that we now have at least beginnings of a plan in the internal audit report, but that's an area that I'd like to see move ahead more. You know, the action plan is something that we need, but we don't have yet, and I'd like to see that, you know, pick up some steam moving forward. And I'd also like to hear, and I don't think we've heard recently, about the second strategy to accomplish that goal, you know, where we are in terms of the engagement with the community and development of the non-financial side of the development of that program.
I guess I'll throw in there, too, just to kind of flush out a little bit of what you said, Lisa. You know, with the under-communication, increasing efforts to connect with parents, both the board coffees, which the Communications Committee initiated, and as well, a couple of meetings the administrators initiated, one about math, math curriculum. And I believe there's additional discussion in the communicate, or curriculum or communication meeting minutes, I can't remember which, on additional sort of joint guidance meetings for kids when they're younger, in terms of communicating about high school course selection and planning. So I think those are new initiatives this year that are really positive as far as communicating with parents. And of course, we hope that our letter regarding the impact of New York State Reform Agenda on our district will be able to be finally sent out shortly. So that one, we could check off our list, at least in the short term. Diane?
I kind of echo what you're saying. I think we've made strides in, you know, all areas, really, but probably food services still needs the most work of the third of the board, but I think we've taken steps everywhere. So I think for the mid-year, we're doing pretty good.
Okay. So I agree, and I think that tonight's proposed transfer to food services is a reminder that we haven't made enough headway. About this time last year, we transferred $100,000 into it, and here we are in the same place a year later. So I think it's a universal opinion of the board to want to do something about it this year with the information that we have from last year. It's been a busy season for the Finance Committee, with lots of things to talk about recently, but if we need to meet, you know, twice a month or do some more online communication about the progress we've made, then we should consider doing that. And in the first Curriculum and Common Core, you know, I was just reminded when I was reading this, we're talking about providing all students with challenging creative curriculum at the beginning of the year. We had a parent come talking about admission programs and differentiating programs, and I think that the Curriculum Committee was going to work on that. I'd love to hear more about that. We don't get that many parents coming to ask for things specifically to the board, and it was nice to see, so I think a follow-up on that.
Yeah, and I also noted in the Curriculum Committee Minutes, because I think it's important that our first board goal around Curriculum and Common Core, that we try to be specific about what it is we're really doing there. Of course, most of that work, all of that work, is being done by teachers and principals and our administration, but certainly one of the issues that was raised in our communications with parents was concern about developmentally inappropriate curriculum materials that are being foisted upon in this particular complaint, you know, early, of the children in the early grades. And I think if we're serious about trying to monitor the impact of Common Core standards, which is one of our goals, then follow up on that and a reflection on really, how are we interfacing with these goals? You know, that's why we want communications, so we want to follow up on that. So I think we should be attentive to that when we reflect on this later in the year is...and of course, it's all developing, and it's mid-year, but I think that's one of, you know, the key things that we have a responsibility to have an understanding of when the year ends, is what has been the impact. So Deirdre?
I just want to second that and to say that we're, this year, we're in a sort of unique situation responding locally within our own community and our own district to the challenges of meeting these very radically different circumstances, instructional changes, changes for teachers, changes in evaluation. It's been a year of tremendous change, and I have to say, I'm actually incredibly impressed by the spirit with which it's been addressed by the educators in our school district. And simply to kind of say that I hope we can be as supportive as possible moving into this budgeting process. We've already seen identified certain criteria that, where we can be materially supportive to that process. So I think being responsive is crucial to everything we do, both in terms of curriculum, listening to the feedback we're getting from parents, from the people who've come to these meetings, listening to teachers, listening to experts in special education, right, in terms of about how we can communicate out about the choices that are being made around curriculum. And being responsive to the experience that is taking place in the classroom, both in the perspective of the children, the students, the teachers, the building principals, the administrators. So for me, that's the number one goal for us, is listening, being responsive, being thoughtful, and trying to kind of continually ask ourselves if we are, if we can do more, if we can do better.
Okay. That's...we're kind of in a good place, you know, reflecting on a whole host of goals in a very dynamic and changing educational environment. So any other comments? All right, well, we'll revisit this again in the future. Thank you. Then we'll move on to our Board Committee reports, and since it's been a long time since we've met as a full board, we have just about every committee has met. So we'll go through them one by one, and, you know, I just ask to just try to stick to the highlights or things that you need from the board, and get through this. Let me just skip to my first one. This is the first one, the Audit Committee, yep. So let's see. Who did those?
Joe did those. Joe and Diane. It's fine. We basically just reviewed the draft audit with the auditors, and most of that's not open for public discussion.
I will just say that I did attend that meeting, though I'm not on the Audit Committee, and I was really, is incredibly informative, and I think it's important to share that the auditor from the new firm was very complimentary of our business office and of Tom in particular for doing a really fine job managing our budget and appropriately managing codes. And, you know, as we can tell just from your report earlier, your facility with all the variations in teaching staff, the numbers of things that you have to track, and the auditor was very complimentary of budget management here. And so I just want to share that with everyone else, because it's important that, to recognize what a great job our business office does. So I was delighted to attend that meeting. Any questions?
Thank you. I'll let the business office know. We appreciate that.
Good.
Remind me to tell them. Thank you.
Any questions for the Audit Committee right now? Okay, then we move on to our Curriculum Committee Minutes. I believe, is that Deirdre? Yes?
Yes, although I write lengthy minutes, I'll simply say that we, I think, wrapped up, or at least have come to a certain kind of tentative idea about how we'd like to communicate around the earth science requirement. We're sort of talking through the idea of creating a meeting for parents who are interested and concerned about the opt-out option to enroll in with the ninth and 10th grade meeting in the fall with guidance, which could actually answer host of questions and concerns that people kind of looking forward to moving out of the middle school and into the high school may have. So I believe we're at this point kind of waiting to hear back from the principals about that idea. We continue our conversation about the accelerated reading program and how best to build upon that platform to support Common Core learning standards and kind of deep goals behind them, as opposed to perhaps maybe getting caught up in the particulars. We actually heard quite a bit from Marvin Krebs about the idea of the possibility of creating a curriculum governance council, which sounded very exciting to us in the committee. We're looking forward to hearing more about that proposal, but it would actually encourage this notion of communities of practice, where teachers in all three buildings are, or all three schools are engaged in curriculum development with that office, and we'll be hearing more about it. Of course, it'd be important to get a lot of feedback and input from the RTA and developing that model, very important. We will, looking forward, and in terms of our agenda, be investigating what is really meant by being college and career-ready. This is part of the rhetoric of the Region's Reform Agenda. We want to really understand what that means for our students, how, for instance, are sort of the different options that we're guiding students towards as they're leaving high school functioning, how well are they functioning? And we would like to invite Principal Davenport in to enlighten us about those programs. Returning to Diane's point, we do want to investigate some of the comments that have come forward to us from individuals, parents. First of all, about differentiated learning, how are we meeting the needs of individual students within our classrooms, as well as concerns that have been forwarded to us about developmentally inappropriate curriculum, curricula. Finally, we will, I think, continue to talk about the comprehensive health plan that was initially sort of introduced as an ideal last year, and continue to talk about foreign language status at middle school.
Great. Very busy committee. Any questions, Diane?
When you were doing the college and career readiness and how do our students fare when they leave, did you talk about the survey that they did about two years ago about students...
We did not look at that data, but we certainly should do when we have the conversation our next meeting. What data are you talking about?
Two years ago, there was a student survey, graduated students, how they fared their first or second year of college. And it's, the survey certainly has problems. If you look at the numbers carefully, they don't all add up to the same kind of answer, but it's worth looking at.
Two years ago, for our high school students?
Mm-hmm. Right.
Thank you, Deirdre. The Communications Committee.
That's me. So we talked about our next coffee with the board and sort of came to the consensus that Tuesday, March 18, if everybody could look at their calendars, would be a nice way to sort of round out the pilot of this program, so that we can get together with parents and hear the things that are on their minds. Moving forward for next year and the years following, we are hoping to set this as a quarterly event, after, at the end of every quarter, I think, is what we were sort of talking about. So in February and perhaps in March, we'll be talking about dates that might make sense and bring them to you guys to take a look at and actually get them on the district calendar, so they're not ad hoc meetings. We've been working on the graduation poll banner application, so that we can get our congratulations to the graduating class upon the electrical polls. Hopefully, in early June, they're usually up for about a month, and Mark is working on that application. Steve Johnson did some preliminary research on families that leave the district and has found over the last five years that a little over 100 families have left the district. 75% of those are for geographic relocation. But the committee asked that he review data regarding students who leave and then return to the district, and what those reasons may have been, when that happens typically. And we're wondering how many kids over the past five years have come back for high school or some other grade. He has offered to, because the numbers are relatively low about the families that have left for any reason other than geographic relocation, to actually make personal phone calls to those families to see if they'd be willing to talk to us a little bit about their reasons for leaving. And he's going to put together a list of talking points for next meeting to sort of go over appropriate questions and that kind of thing. And I do have a segue for that, and maybe we want to talk about it in old business rather than committee notes.
Yeah, just stick with the committee notes, yeah.
Okay. And then... And then he talked at fairly great length about the use of social media for school districts. Many school districts started using Facebook and social media when Facebook still had the opportunity to say you couldn't respond to posts. So it was a very outward communication from the district. Facebook has lifted that opportunity, so you can have incoming and outgoing conversations with kids. We decided as a committee that we really want to look at strategic goals for priority one, the website, and then priority two, using a social media outlet of some sort, whether it be Facebook or Twitter or any of that. Red Hook uses Twitter. We're going to ask Steve to sort of talk to Red Hook and see why and if it's, you know, helpful. And we're just not really sure what we use it for. And if it became a static page, then it's not useful at all. So we're going to take a look at those. And Steve's going to start putting together sort of a plan for rolling out. He's going to look at School World and see if that's an appropriate platform for our website, if we're using it to its full extent. And if we are, then perhaps there are other programs out there that we can use to host our website.
Great. Very good. Any questions for the committee? All right. Thank you. Very good. The next minutes are from the finance committee. I did those minutes. All of it was the discussion of use of fund balance, the growth of the fund balance due to account codes that were problematic. And that related to the audit committee and the audit as well. So as I'm sure you all know, because they're related, the discussion there relates to action items tonight, although, so we discussed a potential repair reserve, but then since that meeting, we learned that that was not advisable from our attorney, that it would require a referendum to spend those monies. So we clarified the use of that. So, but we did talk about increasing the workers' compensation reserve because of potential liabilities there, unemployment insurance reserve to replenish that, and the tax surcharge area reserve also because of potential liabilities there, increasing that. And we, Tom and Joe recommended transferring monies to the school lunch fund, which has increased in tonight's action item from these minutes as well. At the time, the committee did support moving those excess fund balance into those funds to protect us from future liabilities and also to refund the school lunch program. So this spike in the fund balance was unusual, given the information obtained from the audit. And I think as we discussed earlier, we discussed the budget, that by continuing to try and align spending, budgeting and spending, year to year, the fund balance growth will remain below 4%, which is what's required by, which is permitted by law. So there's supporting documentation on the various funds, which I hope people had a chance to review. This is useful information from the New York State Comptroller's Office, which gives you the parameters for how funds can be set up, how the monies can be put in, how the monies can be withdrawn. And so I think our understanding at the time was there's enough flexibility in the tax surcharge area fund, our workers' compensation fund, unemployment reserve, that we're protecting ourselves from future liabilities without hamstring ourselves should we have excess funds that need to be moved elsewhere. So we could discuss some of these issues now, or we could wait till the actual action items if people have more specific questions about the reserves. Diane?
I think it makes sense to discuss them all now together, because it is kind of a big topic as we get to them. And, you know, we do sort of find ourselves in a good, unusual situation, and we have a little bit extra money that we didn't expect this year and what to do with it. I was initially not in favor of the repair reserve fund, and partially because we have been able to keep up with our repairs, and it was a very restricted fund. I am fine with the tax cert and the school lunch fund and the unemployment fund because we have some real liability there, and we might as well pay for it now while we can. Redistributing the extra $100,000 that would have gone to the repair funds into those other funds, though I'm not, I'm not as comfortable, because the numbers start feeling very arbitrary when we're changing on that amount from week to week and discussion into discussion. And they are a little bit arbitrary. We don't know exactly what the true liabilities of most of these are. But the initial numbers I think you came up with were for logical reasons that I could follow and support. And still, I'd still like to exploit this conversation of why we wouldn't just take that $100,000 and offset the tax levy with it.
Because the tax levy's already been done.
The next, next.
So it goes into the fund balance.
And then that fund balance.
It just stays in the fund balance, and you're over the 4%. So it was really just to get you under the 4%. If it had been in the, well, if it had been in the summertime before the tax levy was done, we could have done exactly what you said, put more money towards the tax levy and reduce taxes further. But since the tax levy's already been done this past year, there's nothing we can do now.
So say we close at less over 4%, we're doing this year's budget, we can choose to transfer as much as we want.
Oh, certainly, certainly.
And to offset this year's taxes.
Yep. And like I said, you know, if you're over the 4%, the controller, the auditor will make a note. The state comptroller will let us know we're over the 4% and what is your plan to get underneath the 4%? And that's an easy plan to do. So, you know, if it was continuous years that were over 4%, then it's really an issue. But a one-year blip, it happens, very easily explainable. I mean, we had over $600,000 worth of, you know, prior year's adjustment that we didn't know about until the auditor let us know after the taxes were already set for the following year. So if, you know, I have no problem either way. You know, I've been over 4% before. It happens. You know, it wasn't intentional. We're not trying to hide any money or anything of that nature. It just so happened, we just happened to have a new auditor that looked at things differently than our previous auditor.
Anyway, anyone else want to weigh in here? Just move all this over. I'd say that, you know, as far as the school lunch fund, I feel like transferring additional monies, I'm totally comfortable that even in the increase, because we know it runs deficit year to year. And one thing the auditor did point out is that that is the norm. You know, I think that there's just wholesale problems with the expectations of how school lunch programs run in 2014 and the requirements of them. And you, you know, basically run on the cheap and kids participate on the cheap and you lose money and, you know, especially in a small school district. So as we are on the verge of kind of trying to improve that program, I'm really comfortable funding it and giving some leeway there to just be comfortable, because it's going to take a little while to see some results from, you know, managing it differently. And instead of feeling like it's a stress on our budget year to year, giving us that breathing room, I think is, I'm completely comfortable with that. But I hear your point about sort of the other monies, like just a different way of looking at how we can spend that or use it to, you know, help offset tax levy.
So do we have a sense for the tax cert? And we've paid out a lot this year, so it seems to me, but I don't have historical data. Do we have a sense of what we'll be facing over the next year?
Well, potentially, it's over a half a million dollars, but it never comes out to be like that. I mean, usually there's, there's, it never comes in where the homeowner or the property gets exactly what they want, but potentially, it's over a half a million.
It's, commercial properties are the big ones.
Commercial properties are the big ones, yes.
So that's where you get bigger numbers.
And a lot of them have been settled, so that number has dwindled. So we're getting down towards, towards where it should all run out here within the next couple of years. We weren't getting any new properties. There's just some old ones that are still waiting to get settled. It's not like there's, you know, somebody who just received their, their tax cert and received the money back, they haven't turned around to go back out again to try to lower it again. You know, they're, you know, once they get set, they've sat down with the town assessor, the attorneys, and they've worked out, you know, this is where we're going to be, you know, and as long as the town doesn't go over and just increase their assessment quite a bit, they're pretty much are going to be okay. So there's not, like I said, we didn't see a lot of new ones this year. Some of the old ones, just another year of it, another year of it. There wasn't like new properties coming up. And a lot of them have been settled over the past couple of years, which is helpful. But there's still a liability out there potentially. And the nice thing about the tax cert reserve is that if that potentiality goes away, those monies can be moved right back into the fund balance to use to offset taxes.
And then for the, the school lunch, I mean, I agree, we can't be running all these deficits all the time, but do we have a sense that, you know, given this jumpstart again this year, we're going to, we're going to get there?
Well.
Or we're going to be needing to put in 100?
We're not going to get down to zero, that's for sure, at least in the first year. But we are working towards that. Beth and I have sat down, we're going to have some recommendations for, for the board to take a look at to save some money for ourselves. It means cutting back in certain parts of the program that we've identified as costing definitely more than what we're able to produce and where we may have flexibility in not offering things that we don't have to or finding a different way to get that to them through the use of, you know, through the use, give you an example, the middle school breakfast program. A couple of kids every day, but it comes to the point, you know, it's costing a lot more to have that server there to provide for those two kids. It just, you know what, we're going to have, you know, those kids are going to have to go down to the high school to pick up their breakfast. It will save us some money, definitely. There's no doubt about it. You know, it costs us to do that. The point of sale will be coming in in a couple of weeks here. That's going to be helpful. We'd like to see how that plays out so money gets put onto account and it's for anything as opposed to just for that lunch. That's going to be, that's going to generate more income. There's no doubt about that. But how much, we don't know. Cost of food is going up. There's no doubt about that. Cost of food is going up. But the one thing that we have been doing is we're doing portion control. This is the size of the meal, that's what it's supposed to be. We weren't always that way in the past, so we're saving money that way, but in the same ways, cost of produce, meat, it's, it's, it's going up. I mean, we're all seeing it. Even though you may not see the price going up at the, at the markets, the packaging's getting smaller.
Right. That's true.
You know, but that doesn't work for us. To us, the packaging is the same, the cost is going up, unfortunately.
Lisa?
Just in terms of the school lunch item that we've been discussing, I mean, I understand the reasons for the recommendation. I agree with the recommendation. The one thing that I wanted to make sure is clear, because I don't think we specifically discussed it, is that, you know, the context for the finance committee's discussion of this in the past has been a recommendation that was made in prior years to actually put a line item into budget for funding of the school lunch program, which is not currently the way that the program is funding, which is why deficit funding is, you know, a perpetual issue for us. I think that as we get more information in finance to go into how the program is running, where the costs are accumulating and how we can try to control them, that we should revisit that issue in committee and bring it back to the board and possibly, if we can do it, before this budget cycle is concluded, so we can make a decision as to whether we ought to be changing the way we fund that program to align item in the budget rather than, you know, deficit funding through fund balance. I don't think that it changes our balance sheet any, but, you know, in terms of transparency, I think it's not a bad idea to have it funded through the budget process rather than dipping into fund balance.
Any other comments or thoughts on this?
I mean, certainly in terms of the, the actual action items, there's opportunity later, hopefully in a few minutes. All right, well, then we'll move on to the next committee report. Where are we?
Policy.
Policy? Okay, and that's Diane.
Policy. So we see in the agenda tonight, there's seven policies that are up for first reading. These were brought to the committee's attention by the internal audit. We reviewed them, questions that we had, we sent them to legal counsel and to Richard Zip, and they reviewed them, and now they're here tonight for first reading. We also started a discussion last year when we were looking at the extracurricular policy, and we were talking about expectations of our players and our coaches. We talked about spectators, so that was on our agenda for this year. So we, we haven't had complaints, there hasn't been issues, but we're wondering input from the full board, you know, should there be a policy for our spectators? Not that it's a problem or it's an issue, but, you know, there currently isn't a policy about that. So we're looking for input there. Next, the committee started our task of reviewing the entire policy of the district. We went through the first series, and some of them, we have no recommendations. Some of them, we're going to get further information from legal counsel. I just want to call your attention to one policy, the number 0310, which is the evaluation of school board operational procedures. So a recommendation on this is that we make sure we have this in our June meeting, that we have a discussion about this as it is a policy. We've done it various ways in the past through retreats, but to make sure that we always are following this, in compliance with this policy, that we, you know, make sure it's on our June agenda to discuss our procedures.
Great. That's it. I have a question, just, I'm wondering if, when, when you had to, you know, this, there was, we had to adjust some policies, right? We had policies that needed to be separated from other policies. So were some of the policies, did that impact old policies that then have to be revised? Like, did you look at that? When you pull things out of a policy, does the policy that remains then have to be read and revised or?
I think that that's going to be picked up in the process of going through the policy book that we initiated. You know, it was important to get these policies in place. Because the auditors called them out, and we now have policies that address those issues. But there isn't really a, the same sort of demanding need to adjust the policies that these were extracted from immediately.
If anything, there's some redundancy there that we can weed out when we go through.
That's what I guess I was just wondering about, the redundancy and, you know.
Yeah, I don't think it's a major problem in the short term. The other thing we'll be doing at the next meeting, when we, again, assuming that, that the board does a first reading of these policies tonight, we do a final reading next time. There's a few other policies that need to be renumbered, and they don't have to be changed, but to kind of put them in the sequence with the ones that were called out by the internal auditor, they'll, they'll be part of the motion that will, that will renumber a handful of policies. So then they'll, they'll be nice in a row and in proper numerical order and that kind of, a few of them are scattered around in our policy book. So we'll clean that mess up in two weeks as well.
Any other questions for the policy?
Just a quick question. I was wondering if the policy committee had a recommendation about how we assess our operational effectiveness?
We did talk about it a little bit. We talked about various ways, because we've done it through retreat, just a conversation about it.
Discussion.
For a discussion or even like a written evaluation of things, but we felt just the discussion would take care of.
I mean, that, you know, it's, it's an area that the policy committee can, can talk about that. further. I mean, we can, we could riff on that for quite a while, but at least initially, if we codify it as an agenda item that's on every June, at least we know we do that much. If we want to get more creative beyond that, we can, but this way we won't, we won't go through a whole cycle without having done that, so that's...
We felt a little bit like if there was a discussion and we felt like there was a need, an issue or anything, that that might spur a retreat that was the topic of, you know.
All right, great. Any other questions? Yes?
I mean, I think now would be at least the time to ask what the rest of the board thinks about the idea of having a policy on the conduct of spectators at school events. You know, we, the policy committee, did not come to a consensus on whether we thought there should be such a policy, but before we tried and do any work to develop a policy, we wanted to know whether anybody thought we needed one. So what do you all find?
Go ahead.
Is the goal of having a policy that if there's someone who's just not knowing how to behave as a spectator at an event, there's some kind of recourse or, I mean, I'm not really sure what...
There are two, we did talk about why you have policies for things like this, and there are kind of two overall reasons why you might have such a policy. One is, you know, the sort of the precatory, this is how we expect people to be, how we expect them to conduct themselves. And then there's the ability to take action in case there's an event. So if we have no policy on the subject, and then something happens at an event where there are spectators, some spectators do something at an event that we disapprove of, without a policy, we have lesser ability, barring criminal conduct, obviously, to say, you can't do that. So, you know, that's what we were thinking of why we might have a policy, the board thinks we ought to have a policy.
It seems like feedback from the board might help us determine whether it's a higher priority item than a lesser priority item.
Well, I would just, my follow-up question is, every parent of a student who participates in athletics receives, I think, a lot of information, right, along with that contract that the student athlete signs. I feel like it's addressed there, but perhaps it isn't. So, I mean, that would be the sort of the place where a lot of your spectators presumably are being acculturated or given a sense of what the code of conduct is. So I guess that would be my question, is how would the policy on spectators connect to how that communication?
Well, I think that's actually where it came up, because we were, go ahead, Diane.
Well, that's where it started, and it really wasn't a place to kind of insert it in that, so that's why we came out as like, should there be a separate place for it? You know, there's, you know, how to support your athlete, but nothing about, you know, when you're at an event, how you should do it.
So is this strictly for athletic events or for any event, right? We have choral concerts, we have...
So when a fistfight breaks out at a choral concert, I don't know what to do about it.
It would be a policy on guest behavior.
Well, we do have, I would point out that we do have, in our code of conduct, a section that addresses the behavior of visitors, which would apply to the fistfight at the choral concert or the disorderly person at the soccer game or whatever. I think the question, so we have, we have policy that addresses visitor behavior. I guess the question was, since our extracurricular activities policy has something about student behavior and something about coaches' behavior, should we also have something about spectator behavior? I think that's, you know, in the interest of fairness, should we be plugging another piece into that or coming up with a freestanding policy on spectators in spite of the fact that our spectators are by and large pretty well behaved?
Well, I'll share that, I, so I'm a little more, like, I would be reluctant to do that. I tend a lot of sporting events all year long, and I think that our, like, it would depend on what it said, really, but our spectators are well behaved, our students are well behaved. In fact, I would say that if I had any complaint, it would be that sometimes I think our, the adults are overly controlling of spectators and not just appreciating the boisterousness that is a part of being a spectator. And I mean that truly, I don't, I'm not talking about being rude, I'm just saying that being enthusiastic and vocal at a sporting event is part of the fun of sports, I think. So I have observed actually that sometimes the adults in charge are overly controlling of boisterous fans and eliminate that, sort of put a damper on that fun thing, and way more controlling than other schools that I go to. So you can think that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I don't, I don't see the need in any way to have a policy that might further restrict what is, you know, I think spectators are a part of the fun, like, I don't think you're supposed to just sit there, I mean, you can quietly, but I think it's part of the fun to cheer and be loud at appropriate times and appropriate ways. So I would be concerned that a policy that turned out to be more restrictive would make it, like, really less fun for me. And the kids, because the kids get more scolded than I certainly would be. I don't know, I don't know, that seems unfair, actually, right? It seems unfair, they're not going to tell the present school board to fight that.
Well, I was going to say that I would think this would be a low priority, you know, for me, but given that information, I do think maybe we don't...
Or prospective.
Yes, prospective. Perhaps we don't need something in writing that gives yet another reason to keep the controlling hammer down on the people. It just, it doesn't seem like...
It's just my viewpoint, though.
Yeah, but you do go to a lot of events, I do not so far, so it's interesting, because you do want to cheer for your kids, right?
Right.
I would say, I just, I don't envision the policy being like to not cheer or to support your team, it would be just more about inappropriate.
Right.
Not anything, you know, of course we want to cheer for our teams, so I don't think it would be worded in any way like that, it would be more, you know, things that we wouldn't want.
Yeah. And it is true that there are schools, I've just noticed recently at basketball games, that do start the game like by saying, you know, to know, like, calling out during free throws and, I mean, I don't know if you want to go that detailed, but, you know, some parameters, like only positive things, you know, so I would be all for encouraging positive cheering.
That is the case at swim meets, too. I've been amazed, because they're all saying, there will be absolutely no catcalling, there will be, you know, and I think, really, we have to announce this to the people in the stands every time? But I guess there are issues, you know, there are some schools that have issues.
We leave it then to the policy committee to take these comments, yes.
In defense of those, I don't know who is where in the policy committee, but, I mean, in defense of maybe articulating a sort of vision of what good sportsmanship is by players and by spectators, I think there's a way it could be framed so it isn't negative.
Right.
I mean, to my mind, cheering enthusiastically should never be suppressed, but, you know, abusing someone at the free throw or whatever should be. So, you know, I don't want to get into micromanaging it, but somehow there could be a kind of an expression of the principle, you know, as opposed to getting too detailed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that could be very possible.
All right. Very good. That's kind of a fun one. We also... Finally, personnel committee minutes. Most of that was discussion of negotiations with the Ryan McTeesh Association, upcoming negotiations with the anti-unit, and then a brief, we expect Joe to share with us regulations regarding, that might accompany our hiring policy, and we had a brief discussion about availability of substitutes. So, any questions about that? All right.
I just have a quick question. Is there really a concern that we don't have enough substitutes? It seems like we're approving substitutes every meeting.
Yeah, we could use more. And I mean, the reason, it seems to you like we're doing them at every meeting, which we are, is that we're trying to put a full course press on, to use a sports metaphor, but only cheering politely, to get more of them, because either we're hiring them or they're working exclusively at other districts or somebody else is hiring them. So, yeah, we're, there are more than our fair share of days where we run short and we have to cobble something together to tie it.
All right, so we are done with the board committee reports. Thank you, everyone, and we move on now to our comments section, first one being good news. Any good news? All right. Okay? It's all good, lots of good news, lots of good news. Move on now to all business. We at least have one item from business.
I wanted to sort of spin back around on a comment that Jen Hummood had made at our December meeting and then a follow-up email that some of us had gotten from my husband Ali about the idea, based on what we're doing in the communications committee of trying to figure out why families might choose to leave, there are families that aren't in a position to be able to leave if they want to, and is there a way that we can reach out more district-wide to families about sort of a, how are we doing, you know, the ed couch thing? Are we meeting the needs of your students? Are the teachers being responsive to your concerns? You know, and we'd have to sort of come up with some questions that would actually give us some meaningful information, I think, but I think, given our goal of trying to reach out to more parents in more meaningful ways, it might be worth considering. And I don't know how the board is feeling about whether or not that's a useful tool, but, you know, it may help us figure out if we're doing a good job and if there are ways that we're not addressing concerns appropriately and/or celebrating things appropriately.
Well, I think it would be useful to, you know, have the communications committee consider that, and then if people had some feedback on that, I mean, I do have some thoughts that I did share, Deirdre, about that, you know, whether that's the best approach to it. We've done a variety of surveys over the years, you know, the question I have is like a good, a bad survey, like, is bad data, not because anyone, because doing data, getting data properly, that's considered good, is hard to do. You know, is it worth doing or are there other ways to do it? So, you know, maybe I would recommend that if people have comments on that, that we could share it directly with the communications committee, and if, after this meeting, people, you know, forget that, if you want to solicit it, you know, the email ideas on how to approach that, I think that would be, I think it's a good topic for feedback as people think about it.
Yep. I wanted to sort of come back to the full board about the idea of exit interviews for the teachers that are leaving mid-year, and I know that there is a difference of opinion about whether or not we get any information from them, but I do think that, again, in the interest of figuring out how we're doing, talking to our teachers and finding out, you know, if there were any things that they would like to bring to light to the board, to the administrators, it's harder with the administrators, I think, because it's hard to look at your old boss and say, well, you never did what you told me you were going to do, or whatever, but I think it could be instructive to have personal conversations with these teachers and sort of try to see if they're willing to talk to us about why they chose to leave mid-year.
So just to be clear, your question is more like just these mid-year retirees? I mean, you're not, I mean, is your suggestion that, oh, maybe we should interview every teacher when they retire?
Well, we could talk about it, certainly. These mid-year retirements are really sort of the impetus for my question. No, I don't think it ever hurts to learn why somebody is retiring. Nine times out of 10, I'm guessing it's because they've reached retirement age and they're ready to go on to the latter part of their days, but, you know. But, you know, getting information, learning about things that we could be doing better as a group to make a community for our teachers and our kids that is a community rather than something else, I think, is never a bad thing.
Comments? Did you have any opinions?
I did, I agree. I think an exit interview is always a valuable experience. You know, retirement is slightly different than people leaving to find other jobs, seek employment, but we do have a high turnover this year and the last couple of years, hiring new young teachers, so I would expect that we're not going to have this high turnover volume for a long time to come. But we could probably gain a lot of valuable information by doing them, and in general, they're never done by their direct supervisor, because kind of, you know, honest conversations can you really have in those circumstances? It's unfortunate we don't have a human resource department, but we do have a head superintendent.
Yes, you do. And not having good... To me, the question is more how than if, and there's, just like with the conversation about, you know, surveying parents or surveying people who leave or whatever, I think there's an effective way to do that that works with the culture of the organization, and there are probably ineffective ways to do it. So if yours truly is going to do that, and I'm, you know, I don't have a philosophical issue with doing that, I want to make sure we do it in a thoughtful way, and I'm not sure personally that it even has to be done, I mean, we've already had several retire, and we have a few more retiring soon, and we have another small group retiring at the end of June, at least that we know of right now. So I would rather have that conversation maybe with the communications committee and talk about, all right, what's a reasonable, what do we want to know from this process? And is it, you know, a personal outreach on my part? Is it a phone call? Is it some kind of written service? I mean, I'm not, I'm not sitting here saying, yes, this is what I think is the most effective thing, because I don't know, but I would be glad to engage in a conversation and maybe the communications committee or the personnel, I'm not sure which, would be a good place to have that conversation and say, okay, so what do we want to get and what's the most effective way to do it? I will, I will be brutally honest and say that I don't think that having board of education members doing that is the way to go, and I will just say that, and that's how I feel. And I would totally agree that having the direct supervisor do that is, even if the relationship has been the most wonderful in the world, it's still not, it's just that much more subjective. But there are other people in the organization, myself, there are some other people I could mention who are at administrative level in our organization, who could also, I think, have the objectivity to do that, and the relationship with those teachers to say what's on their minds, and maybe what's on their minds is underwhelming, and maybe we get some great information out of it, and maybe some from some and the other things from the other people, so, and I'm glad to have that conversation going forward and do something before, you know, before the year is out and they're sitting on a beach someplace. Joe who?
Never want to take it again.
Joe who?
I just want to add that in our communications committee meeting, we were sort of talking about what are the appropriate, effective, and quite frankly, you know, most revealing ways to communicate and gather information, and I was so impressed by our new colleague, Stephen Jensen's idea that, you know, sometimes a survey or an instrument online or whatever isn't going to get the kind of information you really want, and he said, this is, strikes me, what we're talking about right now is a case of a personal conversation. And so I think, kind of thinking very, in a very nuanced way about, you know, what are the appropriate ways to communicate and gather the information we need is crucial, especially in an institution, an organization like this district where it's very intimate, very small, and we have the luxury of being able to have those personal conversations. So I very much second the idea of...
So does it seem appropriate to be located... So does it seem appropriate to be located, then, in the Communications Committee? Since it seems to be generated somewhere. I mean, you're on that committee, so. Okay, so, and I agree that the superintendent should be doing this, or someone in your stead, as opposed to board members. So, okay, thanks for raising that, Laura. Any other items that anyone else has under old business?
Unfortunately, I do.
Oh, okay.
One is the...
Right.
The board letter to our Regents and our Commissioner and various others. I know at least three of us would really like to get closure on this, if that's possible.
Now, there were two comments from the last meeting that we tried to address in this, and then the red highlights are also in reaction, too, because as Joe shared with us, I think it was December 30th or so, Commissioner King sent out an email to all kinds of school districts, I think to the superintendents. I don't think we got it as board members.
Yeah, they went to superintendent. I forwarded to you.
Right, but you forwarded to us. His reflections on the Common Core, which were in some way a reaction to various forums and, over the fall, and so the thought was that we would, might want to actually directly address that that had happened, and not just write it within a vacuum, and maybe even post on our website the commissioner's letter, as well as this letter, so people could see the conversation that's going on. So that's why the part in red. I also think it's interesting to note in the onboard that came today or yesterday that, you know, there are, some of the things we're writing about here certainly are being discussed at the legislature, you know, efforts to sort of slow some things down the Common Core, certain Assembly members have signed on to requesting that the state not share information within Bloom, so the dialogue's happening at all levels in the state. So again, the idea that on the website, we would be kind of participating in that dialogue, and also directly writing to these people, I think, is our idea. If anyone has any comments of anything they'd like to change again, or edit, we'll take that under advisement, but I think Joe's right, we'd like to really put a, send this off. Okay? Diane?
Thank you for making the changes and for all the work.
Great, all right. Well, the conversation will continue and continues, so it's good that we have something here that our parents and the rest of our community can also be a part of, so, great, we'll do that, thank you. And then we have the school calendar.
Yeah, and I, you know, at the risk of opening up a can of worms that I don't personally feel is a can of worms, but some people might, I did give you an overview of where I think we're at, and what my recommendation would be, which is to stay the course. Essentially, we can really use the superintendent's conference day that is, that has been calendared since last May. We have used three of our emergency closing days, we have two additional, and then we have several that are waiting in the wings from May 23rd, and then April 21st, and others as they've been outlined. We already have a student school year that has more than the requisite number of school days for our students, which is one of the reasons why a number of years ago, we negotiated for more days in the teacher contract, because that translated into more days in the student contract. We actually, we were required to close school on November 26th. We actually only lost a half of a student day, because I was able to bring in the teaching staff and engage them in professional development activities that day. So that wasn't, strictly speaking, a loss of a snow day, it was more the fact that because we had a half-day, it didn't make any sense to bring kids in and literally turn them around a half an hour later. So my recommendation would be to stay with the calendar the way we have it now, and play out the rest of the weather as it plays out, and we're certainly, truth be told, we're certainly not in the worst shape of many of our neighbors in terms of cushions, so. But I, since it's, you know, people, you know, inquiring minds want to know, I thought I should give you that explanation, and we should at least bring it up here, and I should gauge your support one way or the other, or go in a different direction if you want me to do that, so. That's my thinking.
It looks like people are okay with your thinking, so, great.
Let's move on.
That was easy, very good.
Appreciate that.
All right. Any other old business? Okay, then we move on to our second opportunity for public comment. Would any members would like to comment? Okay, then we'll move on to other. Do we have any items for other?
Just one last call. We have a seat for Diane Ravitch's talk on Thursday night. Apparently, they have a, they have an overflow, they have a waiting list, and Deirdre is not going to be able to attend. A few of you have told me you're not available, and that's fine, I'm going, I think Lisa's going, Tom has signed up to go, and Marvin has signed up to go. If nobody wants Deirdre's seat, then I'll call them tomorrow and have them release that to somebody who's on the waiting list. I don't want to not show up if there are people who want to get in, so I just, this is one last shot, because it's Thursday, and I need to pull the plug on that seat by tomorrow morning, so. Okay.
Okay.
And the other thing is that three of us, two Deirdres and a Joe, are attending the State of Rhinebeck Dinner on January 30th. If anybody else would like to join us, please let us know within the next couple, I'd like to register us by the end of this week, if I can, just so, wouldn't want to get shut out. That's all I have.
I don't think I'll be able to go.
Excuse me?
Take me off the list, I won't be able to.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can't go either.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, great.
I just wanted to ask, when should we expect, usually Mr. Boucher and Sheldon come and give like an overview during the budget process?
Next meeting I have scheduled for you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. So, no other other? Move on now to our action items, and I don't expect our action items to take 50 minutes, but I would just say that is a policy of ours that we do not take action after 11:00 P.M., so just know that as we go through this discussion, okay? We have a lot of time, but, you know, we can talk, so. All right, moving on to our action items, then. Do I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent item?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Julie Taye to commence on or about June 2nd, 2014, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave for the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing, to the extent of her accrued sick leave, and thereafter such leave to be taken as unpaid childcare leave through the conclusion of the 2013-14 school year on June 26th, 2014.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional coaches, advisors for the 2013-14 school year. For crew boys varsity, Brian Callen, $4,381. Girls varsity, Ralph Bosco, $4,381. And novice Doug Mulqueen, $3,032.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Catherine Torres, the position of elementary teacher, assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective January 27th, 2014, in the tenure area of elementary, at a salary of Step 1, MA plus 6, $57,006 prorated, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the permanent civil service appointment of Donna Shellhammer to the position of clerk, effective January 1, 2014.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept a grant award from the Community Foundations of the Hudson Valley, in the amount of $1,600 in support of the implementation of the grant entitled "The Tempest," as submitted by Mrs. Maureen Cunningham, as stipulated.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? Deirdre?
I just want to say, what a fantastic opportunity it was for the students to go and see a full-fledged production of "The Tempest," and in this time of, I guess, sort of questioning about what's being taught in the literature classroom, Shakespeare is alive and well.
Very good. And we can thank the, Mrs. Cunningham and the Community Foundations for supporting that, so. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Christopher McKibben to the position of custodial worker 1.0 FTE, at a salary of Step 1, $32,234 prorated, in accordance with the ante salary schedule for 2013-14, effective January 2nd, 2014, with a 26-week probationary period.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional advisors for the 2013-14 school year, effective December 3rd, 2013.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve an extension of the appointment of Lisa Cole as a long-term substitute in the position of social worker at Bulbly Middle School, Rhinebeck High School, having commenced on December 3rd, 2013, through a date on or about January 29th, 2014, pending receipt of physician's verification of return-to-work status, at the pleasure of the board, at the salary of Step 1, MA plus 30 plus 30, $61,960 prorated, in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Megan Rodier, social worker at Bulbly Middle School, Rhinebeck High School.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint additional 2013-14 CLS before-school enrichment program instructors.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a first reading and consideration of Board Policies Number 4321.1, Provision of Special Education Services in the Least Restrictive Environment. 4321...
That should be two.
Point two. School-wide pre-referral approaches and interventions. 4321.6, Availability of Alternative Format Instructional Materials for Students with Disabilities. 4321.7, District-wide and statewide assessments of students with disabilities. 4321.9, Declassification of Students with Disabilities. 4321.11, Public Report on Revisions to District Policies, Practices, and Procedures Upon a Finding of Significant Disproportionality. And 4321.14, Special Education Personnel Qualifications and Training.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments?
I just have, there's some cross, the policies are all fine, the cross-references on, a number of them don't cross-reference the, how the policies are on the website, so for six, or 4321.2, we don't have a policy for that, and 4325, I think we have it as academic support services. I don't know whether that's changed or not, but it's still named support.
I'll go back through and make sure the cross-references are accurate before the final reading. Thank you for, I appreciate it.
There are a couple of others, but I'm sure you...
Yeah, I'll go through the whole stack.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve mentors for the 2013-14 school year, effective December 3rd, 2013.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency, additional substitute teachers and non-instructional staff for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution. Whereas the Board has established a reserve fund on June 23rd, 2009, pursuant to the provisions of Section 6M of the General Municipal Law, for the purpose of paying the cost of reimbursements to the state unemployment insurance fund, for payments made to claimants where the employer has elected to use the benefit reimbursement method for paying unemployment insurance, as opposed to the contribution method, known as the Unemployment Insurance Reserve Fund, and whereas the Rhinebeck Central School District has elected to use the benefit reimbursement method for payment of unemployment insurance, and now, therefore be it resolved, that the Board hereby appropriates the sum of $34,000 for such purposes from the 2012-13 undesignated fund balance, to reestablish the reserve funding and authorize the transfer of such monies from the general fund to the Unemployment Insurance Reserve Fund.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution. Whereas, Section 3651, 1A, and 3A of the education law authorize a school district to establish a reserve fund for the payment of judgments and claims and tax surcestry proceedings, and to make payments therefrom, whereas the Board of Education desires to establish such reserve fund to pay for judgments and claims for pending tax surcestry proceedings, now therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby reestablishes a reserve fund balance with an additional amount of $2,025,000 to be known as the Tax Surchury Reserve Fund, for the payment of judgments and claims and pending tax surcestry proceedings, and authorizes the transfer of such amount from fund balance and the general fund to the Tax Surchury Reserve Fund.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. Any questions or comments? Diane?
Tom, last year when you gave us this multi-year fund balance projection, why did you project that this year's tax cert would be higher than last year's? Was there a plan last year to transfer money? And then we...
No, I think we just ended up having more, paying out more than we anticipated, and that's why it was higher up than now, it's just, that was just a fund established, and I was never looking to add money to it. It was, that's what it was at the time, and that just carried forward.
Last year, we ended at 144. This year was projected to be at 286. And the cases that you talked about that have already been settled, does that include Stockton Shop?
Yes.
Did we already pay them back last year?
Yes. Yes. I did go back.
Do you know off the top of your head what's still pending up there?
Beekman, Delamater, CVS. I know that they go back for a number of years. I know that, what's the apartment complex? They put in a huge one. What's that?
The Gardens.
The Gardens. They've put in a big one this year. A very big one. They got a refund a couple of years ago, but they've put in again, and it's very large. It's 50 units, or thereabouts, asking for big-time monies back. Those are the three really big ones we have out there. And then there's a number of smaller ones.
And when they settle, is it retroactive that we have to pay back to when they first filed?
Yes. Yep. Or for whatever years they settle for. Sometimes I've seen it, I've seen it happen where they don't retroactively go back and they say, "From here forward." That's a possibility, but we don't know. And the good thing about this is if those cases get settled and done with, we can take the money right out of that fund balance, or out of the tax surcharge reserve, and put it back into the fund balance.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Okay, that's, all right, that's unanimous, that motion passes. Motion, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution? Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Rhinebeck Central School District hereby authorizes the appropriation... authorizes the appropriation of $127,000 from General Fund unappropriated fund balance to be transferred to the School Lunch Fund to cover the prior year's School Lunch Fund deficit and the current year operating loss by June 30th, 2013.
14.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Lisa, any questions or comments, discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's Lyons, Shulkin, Rosenthal, Burns, Fleischauer, and Dalberg, opposed, abstaining, Camperos. That motion passes. Moving on to 6.17, may I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the following resolution. Whereas, the Board may establish a reserve fund pursuant to the provisions of Section 6J of the General Municipal Law for the purpose of paying the cost of compensation and benefits, medical, hospital, or other expenses authorized by Article 2 of the Workers' Compensation Law and to pay the expenses of administering, administering, excuse me, a self-insured program. And therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby establishes a reserve fund pursuant to Section 6J of the General Municipal Law to be known as the Workers' Compensation Reserve Fund for the purpose of paying the cost of compensation and benefits, medical, hospital, or other expenses authorized by Article 2 of the Workers' Compensation Law and to pay the expenses of administering a self-insured program. And be it further resolved, the Board hereby appropriate the sum of $175,000 for such purpose from the 2012-13 undesignated fund balance and authorize the transfer of such monies from the General Fund to the Workers' Compensation Reserve Fund.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion, questions? Diane?
Tom, you had said that you expect some different rulings on this in February.
Yes.
And at that time, we're free to do whatever we want with this if we're not required to keep this amount of money.
Well, there's the unfunded liability that is out there currently, right now. What's being changed is how to fund it currently. And the, what the thought is here is the rules are going to be changed so that our contribution for the current period is going to be smaller, but at that point, we'll start hitting away at that unfunded liability through our contribution in the regular budget. But there may come a point where the workers' comp decides that, no, we need the money and then this money would be, at least part of that money would be available if and when the workers' comp, the Dutchess County Workers' Comp Board, if, which I'm a member of, if they ever do decide that those unfunded liabilities need to be paid, then we'll have the money available to do that. There's two ways they can do it. First of all, they could increase our annual amount to pay for it, or they could come as a separate assessment. And that's not been discussed, but at least the money's there that we could handle it either way then. And if earnings get better, that unfunded liability could go away. And the new rules may treat it a little bit differently too, which may turn unfunded liability, which is about $350,000 at the end of last year, that could shrink. But in February, we'll know a lot more about that, how those rules will impact our consortium.
So, just to follow up on that, so when the state, when those new rules come down in the state, will it be, and the Finance Committee can review then, the impact on our consortium and then the relationship to this fund? If it seems that the rules are actually like that we have overfunded this, can we respond to that?
Oh, yeah. No, anytime you overfund anything, you definitely have the ability to move it out of there if that's the case. There is quite a few, a lot of.
So I think we should be then, you know, I guess my view would be that the Finance Committee would certainly be on top of this, you know, as it unfolds. Because I respect the position that we have to be cautious because we're not sure what the state's going to require from us. But we should be reacting to that when those rules come down. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. Okay, may I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations with Rhinebeck Teachers Association?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Lisa, all those in favor? That's unanimous, we're moving into executive session.